Good evening, everyone. Today, October 10, 2023, at 6:00 p.m., we call for order. Please join me for the pleasure, ladies.
(inaudible) 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 I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie? Board and public announcement. Board members or individuals in the audience may like to make a statement of information about a recent or coming event. Any board members?
(noise)
No?
Your microphone is not working.
Oh, okay. All right. Moving on. Any public comment? Anyone that would like to, if there is, come to the podium?
Your mic still isn't working.
No? Oh, it doesn't work.
The green light's on.
Oh, the green light just said, okay. All right, it's working, I think. It's still working. I have brought it out.
Let me ask you.
Yeah. We don't have a public hearing today, but we have presentations and reports. And we have a presentation of Fire Department, we have a promotion, and a chippy shape, please, if you can come to the podium.
Uh, Nick Wilson? (inaudible) Yeah? All right, well, first of all, thanks again to the township board for allowing the Fire Department to do a swearing-in ceremony. And also, we're going to do awards tonight, so we appreciate the time on the agenda and the opportunity to honor the employees in front of the township, so deeply appreciated. Tonight, we're going to start off with the swearing-in of firefighter Nick Wilson to Fire Inspector, and I'm just going to jump right into it. The promotion of a firefighter to that of an officer is a great moment of honor and pride for all these gentlemen, their families, and Independence Fire. I'd like to briefly share what it takes to become an officer for Independence Fire Department. Interested officer candidates must endure a competitive testing process that includes a written exam, oral interviews conducted by outside fire agency professionals, a board of review process that measures and grades each candidate based on their level of formal education, training and certifications, performance evaluations, and work history, discipline and attendance history, and finally, the candidate is reviewed by the Fire Chief, myself, for their overall capacity and readiness to be promoted to the officer level. The candidate is then placed onto a promotional eligibility list in descending order based on their scores. Nick came out number one on the list. Once selected and promoted from the eligibility list, the new probationary officer must serve a six-month probationary period to ensure the performance will meet the needs of the position. It's during this time the new officer is coached and developed to form to the high level expected of an IFD officer. The probationary officer will be required to satisfy several core competencies during the probationary period, such as: the ability to perform and promote excellent customer service to all we serve in our community, be able to demonstrate excellent decision-making abilities both in emergencies and non-emergency situations, and finally, the probationary officer must demonstrate their ability to promote and operate within the team concept and ensure the vision and goals of the Fire Department are being met every day. Getting scared again? A little background on Nick. You worried now?
That's our favorite part.
Nick has served as a firefighter paramedic for our department over the past 10 years. He's state-certified in Fire Officer 1 and 2. He has a bachelor's degree, he is certified in the incident command system, and he's also a state-certified fire instructor. Additionally, Nick works and is involved with our department in the following committees: he's on the IFD hazardous materials team, and he also serves on the fire equipment committee team. When it comes to desired traits an organization would expect from its personnel, especially an officer, three come to mind: loyalty, trust, and respect. To be able to share in both the positives and negatives of your peers is a great start. Nick is a person that no matter the cost to his personal well-being, he will make sure that he is there at the forefront assisting or cheering you on. He can be counted on to step up and provide you support in your time of need, or be there to celebrate the personal victories of one of his peers. Nick has proven to be loyal. Over the 10 years Nick has been with our department, he has proven to be, he has proven to be a person many of his peers look up to for guidance, experience, and expertise. His presence amongst his fellow firefighters instills a confidence with the entire team and helps to ensure positive outcomes with emergency situations and life around the fire station. Nick has proven to be trustworthy. Soon to be Lieutenant Wilson, he is the epitome of treat others how you'd want to be treated. For the past six months, he has found himself in a position as the senior firefighter for his fire station. He has taken this role on with great pride and dignity and has shown he has what it's taken upon himself to ensure his fellow firefighters have been ushered into a positive direction under his tenure. This has included assisting with training, teaching others, mentoring of employees on a regular basis. Essentially, Nick has stepped forward very humbly and positively as a leader with no prodding or pushing of myself. Essentially, he gets it, and he has gained our respect. Over the two years I've been here, I've watched and witnessed Nick grow in a great direction. He has certainly earned the respect of his fellow peers and that of myself. And lastly, but most importantly, when selecting potential candidates for promotion to that of an officer in IFD, we require they come in with a great work ethic, great character and integrity, and have conducted themselves in a manner to establish exceptional credibility amongst their peers. With that, I can proudly say that firefighter Nick Wilson has successfully met all of these expectations and is most deserving of being promoted and sworn in officially to Staff Lieutenant Fire Inspector with Independence Fire Department this evening. Next thing I would like to do is pin on Nick's new badge. If I can. Next thing is Captain Moskovic will present Nick with his new fire helmet for his position.
A lot of you have heard my speech before, especially the board, about the tradition of a fire helmet and a fire service. It represents, the guy's starting off as a young fireman, it's blue, and then a black helmet was a fireman's full-time, and then it goes on to a lieutenant that is red, and then a captain that is white on the front of your operations. Nick is stepping off one truck. It's an honor for me to give this to him. He's worked with me, alongside me, and then came up, and then as I get promoted captain, he's worked under me. He's been nothing more than a great fireman. He's walking onto the other side of fire prevention, which is a little different role when you step on, you're no longer stepping off a fire engine, you're actually going in before. You're going out and you're inspecting the community, working with kids, teaching, educating, and keeping us safe before we walk in, and then going in after and trying to figure out what was going on and why it happened. It's a great honor to present this to Nick Wilson. You're going to do great, and we're proud of you, Nick. Congratulations.
If I could ask Carrie Newbeck to come down and swear Nick in for the township?
(inaudible) 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 Well, anybody that knows me knows that I relished a chance to stand in front of a microphone. I like to give speeches, try to help people out when they need it. I do, you know, some side gigs with DJing, and I do the Christmas party and things like that. So I do like hearing my own voice, I can't lie about that. But really, you know, I'm honored to be promoted today. It's something that means a lot to me, and it's taken a lot for me to get here. It's taken a lot of help from a lot of people. I've been here 10 years as a full-time firefighter. I started in 2007 as an on-call. I've seen every rank, as low as you can go here, all the way up to where I'm, you know, getting ready to be, starting this morning. My first captain was Pat Stamper, and he really showed me what it was like to be, you know, a good, solid, real firefighter. And it was just something that heroes did before I was here. I had no intention of being a firefighter. You know, I moved shifts a lot, trying to just fill in the voids where they needed to go. I ended up working with Captain Dave Bridgewater, who was there for me in some of the, you know, hardest times of the fire service that we had. And then finally, Dave retired, and we got stuck with Captain Derek Moskovic. Who honestly, there wasn't a better guy in the department for the job. I was happy to work with him. So I've now worked through almost every captain that we've had, and I, as much as they say they've seen me grow, I've watched all of them grow too. None of them were officers when I started. And to see them take the leadership ability, the leadership skills that they've learned and be able to apply it on the fire ground and in the station, it means the world to me that they share the same respect with me. Through all this, you know, my family's been here the whole time. My parents, they came up from Florida just to be here for tonight. My grandma, she's here, she's been moving all around. And my aunt and uncle are also here. Yeah, so, well, let me introduce them all for you. So my family's scattered throughout because we're late. But my wife and daughter are sitting up here towards the front. My son is in the far back corner, that's Lincoln. My parents are in front of him. And then my grandmother, Jack, Pat and Sandy, my aunt and uncle. You know, they've supported me my whole life, and I'm happy that they're here. I wouldn't want to do this without them. As far as the position of Fire Inspector, I'm excited to work this role. I went to school for disaster management and disaster prevention, and I honestly never thought it was something I was going to get a real chance of using. Talking to Fire Marshal Greg and Chief Pache about basically everything that I learned in that is still applicable to the Fire Inspector service, and that there's room to grow, room to improve every aspect of it. So I'm really hoping that I do everybody justice, that I do a great job, and I know I will, and as long as I have, you know, guys like Chief Pache behind me, I can't imagine anything going wrong here. So, thank you very much.
Chief, can you let everybody know that we'll be timed for pictures?
Yeah, we have a few pictures after the awards. Bring it, will you?
Alrighty. Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is Fire Department Awards. Just to give you a little background, about a year or so ago, Pat, maybe a year and a half ago, we pulled a committee together in the Fire Department of our employees to develop a program of how to recognize the firefighters throughout the year. And we came up with different categories that they would be recognized for their different duties on the job. Additionally, if you look at some of the firemen, we established now these ribbons, they're called, and these ribbons will signify certain awards that the firemen will get moving forward. So this evening, I will call up eight different groups, and I'll read up perhaps a paragraph or so on what they did to achieve that award, and then they'll be presented with a certificate and their ribbons to go on their Class A uniforms moving forward. So that's kind of the, how we got ourselves to this spot. So the awards that we're going to give out tonight are for 2022. So anything that happened in 2022 that the committee felt made the cut to be recognized as an award, that's who we'll be giving awards to this evening. Two of the main awards that I'm going to give out tonight, the only two for tonight, one's called the Distinguished Service Award, and one's going to be the Life Saving Award. I'm just going to read you what qualifies for each one. So for the Distinguished Service Award, criteria shall consist of either a specific extraordinary incident or an extended period of exceptional service in one or more of the following categories. One, displayed exemplary initiative in customer service to the community. Two, outstanding professional conduct and judgment and duty performance. Three, efficiency, effectiveness, and productivity in job performance. Four, recognition of teamwork and cooperation in working with fellow employees to help meet and achieve the goals and visions of the department. This award will consist of a distinguished award pin, like I explained, that'll be on their Class A dress uniform, and a certificate and a letter of commendation. So that's Distinguished Service Award. The Life Saving Award will go out to the individual or team actions resulted in or directly contributed to the saving of a human life that involved no personal danger to the life of the employee. So as I give these out tonight, you'll understand what those awards for and the background of the incident, it'll come together. And before I get going, so there's two things I'd like to explain about Fire Department Awards that, through my experiences, become challenging. Number one, firefighters are very, very humble, and just to keep tracked and have these guys harbor in good things that happen on the job is a tough thing because they just think it's a part of the job. So it's tough to even gather that information because they don't want to record it. They just do their job, that's just how they think. So that's the big challenge, number one, and I always remind the shift commanders, I think I did the last couple days, to please pay attention if there's something going on that we need to capture, either customer service, an unusual run, a life-saving thing, please let's capture it so we can award these guys in the future. So that's number one. Number two, essentially is, as time goes on, the awards thing, it's going to be harder for them to come up with different things because they're going to feel like they're not deserving of it. But I just want to let you know, it's a tough thing, these guys are pretty humble, and probably the most important thing I'd like to share is, these gentlemen are receiving awards tonight, but day in, day out, these firefighters are doing good deeds, be it from customer service to helping somebody out at their house, medical runs, fire runs, it goes on and on and on, that we're not getting captured. So even though we captured this group for tonight, I'm just very honored to work with these guys, they do a great job every day, and not everything gets caught, I guess the best way to put it. So if I could go right into the first set of awards, I'm going to call up firefighter Brent Hiltner and firefighter Dan Abishan, please. Okay, on August 1st, 2022, at 6:30 p.m., firefighters Brent Hiltner and Dan Abishan responded to a head-on collision with injuries on Sashval Road. They treated two individuals for their injuries and transported one of them to a hospital emergency care for further care. Later that evening, around 10:00 p.m., the same crew of firefighters, Hiltner and Abishan, responded to a medical emergency, which led to the transport of another patient that had a medical to the same hospital ER that they transported, the first patient from the vehicle accident earlier in the night. While they were there and before they left the hospital to come back to their fire station, these firefighters took the time to search out the patient from the head-on collision they transported earlier to see how he was doing. This gentleman was so impressed that these firefighters checked in on him that he took the time to write a letter to the editor of the Clarkston News to acknowledge their professionalism. I'd like to read that letter aloud to all of you. "Kudos to Fire Chief Pache and the staff at Independence Fire Department exclamation point. I was visiting friends in Clarkston on Monday, August 1st at 6:30 p.m. My friend and I were involved in a head-on collision on Sashval Road. These two firefighters arrived at 6:41 p.m. and tended to my colleague and me, and then transported me to the hospital. There's more exclamation point. These two men searched me out in the emergency room about 10:00 p.m. and came to my bedside to see how I was doing. Now this is first class, and that's all capitalized. Thank you, guys. Howard Wright from London, Ontario." So we're recognizing both these firefighters for that excellent customer service. That's stuff I don't teach, I don't tell them to do, they do that on their own, and we'd like to honor them tonight with both a Distinguished Service Awards. Next up, I'd like to call firefighter Ryan Bray and firefighter Lee Green, please.
Okay, this is an unusual one for you. On the evening of February 26, 2022, IFD fire crews were dispatched to a scene of a horse stuck on the ice. Upon arrival, fire crews encountered a horse laying in a pasture, stuck on a hard-packed ice that was making it impossible for the horse to get up and get its footing. The owner of the horse reported that the horse had been outside, exposed to the cold temperatures for more than two hours, and that the horse was no longer making attempts to try to stand up. After a bit of strategizing by our fire crews, they decided to use a Megamover, that's a piece of equipment we have at the Fire Department, that we use on our ambulances. The Megamover is used in lieu of a stretcher to move patients from areas that are inaccessible to stretchers. With assistance from the owner, fire crews were able to help the horse enough to get the tarp underneath the horse's stomach, and then attach a rope to a fire vehicle and to the Megamover to pull the horse to better ground. However, the horse was still not able to stand up on its own. The horse was too cold and weak to lift its own weight, approximately 1,200 pounds, so the fire crews had to get more creative. Firefighter Bray, behind me, made the decision to contact Al Dorn Excavating. Al's a retired firefighter from IFD, and to see if he was able to bring his skid steer with forks to lift the horse up. With the help of Al Dorn, the Megamover was used to lift the horse enough to get the soft lifting straps secured and attached to Al's excavator. The horse was then carefully lifted and assisted to its hooves. Hooves, hooves. However, the horse's weight was supported by the excavator until its owner deemed him stable. After some time, the horse was able to regain its strength, stand, and walk, assisted back to the barn with no lingering issues. Not your everyday type of call, and not a call that our crews train on. However, these firefighters on this night were able to successfully strategize and improvise an out-of-the-box solution to assist both the horse and its owner. For their professionalism and kindness, no doubt saved the life of this horse and providing above and beyond customer service to the horse's owner and horse, I'm honored to present firefighter Ron Bray and firefighter Lee Green the Distinguished Service Award.
And I'd also acknowledge there was another firefighter on scene that night, and that's retired Captain Dave Bridgewater, who I see made the audience tonight. Dave, you can stand up. Dave? Dave was a part of that crew that evening. All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it. If I could call up Captain Derek Stamper, firefighter Brent Hiltner, and firefighter Dan Abishan, please.
All right, on October 22nd, 2022, Captain Derek Stamper and firefighters Brent Hiltner and Dan Abishan were requested by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department to a vehicle accident scene to assist with an unusual cleanup of the roadway from debris of an accident. It's another weird run, just so you guys know. It was an unusual cleanup as it involved the remains of a horse. Horses seem to be a problem in this kind of sound thing. Unfortunately, a horse had wandered onto a roadway and was struck by a vehicle and killed on the roadway, and it needed to be removed. Whilst not every day are firefighters are faced with such a scene to deal with, and a scene they are not trained to deal with, but they did. Utilizing great ingenuity and technical rescue training, Captain Derek Stamper and firefighters Brent Hiltner and Dan Abishan were able to establish a three-to-one mechanical advantage using technical rescue equipment from our department to remove the large horse from the roadway. The Sheriff's Department also commented on how impressed they were with our firefighters to accomplish this feat. For their great thinking, out-of-the-box, once again, and going above and beyond on such an unusual, once-in-a-career call for help, I hope that's once-in-a-career, I'm honored to present Captain Derek Stamper, firefighters Brent Hiltner, and Dan Abishan the Independence Fire Department Distinguished Service Award for their service to our department and the community.
Thank you, guys.
(applause) Thank you guys.
Okay, if I could call Captain Moskovic, Lieutenant Cruz and firefighter Turner up Okay, on May 10th, 2022, IFD was requested to provide mutual aid to Auburn Hills for a structure fire at the Masonic Temple Town Home Complex. The call for help from Auburn Hills was due to the fact that their fire crews were already battling another fire. Upon arrival, by themselves, IFD fire crew of Captain Moskovic, Lieutenant Cruz and firefighter Turner were faced with heavy volumes of fire and smoke coming from the second level of a town home. They were immediately assigned to establish a water supply and then be the primary interior fire attack team to go in first. These three firefighters made their way into a heavily involved structure with fire and smoke, located the stairway and proceeded upstairs to begin their attack on the fire. These firefighters endured extremely hot temperatures, thick black smoke that made visibility very difficult to impossible, on a fire that was well-established and free burning. They made their way to the seat of the fire and tirelessly battled it for a while and eventually they were able to knock it down and fully extinguish it. Their aggressive and tactical fire tack kept that fire from extending and spreading to the other town homes and prevented further damage. Their efforts, their efforts, nothing short of phenomenal for a three-person team, very well done. For their professionalism, firefighting expertise, great efforts of battling this fire and helping to preserve nearby residential properties, I am honored to present Captain Derek Moskovic, Lieutenant Frankie Cruz and firefighter Brent Turner the Independence Fire Department distinguished service award for their service to our department and representing our fire department with honor and distinction in Auburn Hills. You should all be proud. Okay, if I could call up Lieutenant Sean Fitzpatrick, firefighter Ron Bray, firefighter Okay, on August 25th, 2022, Independence Fire Department was dispatched to an unknown medical emergency. Upon arrival, an elderly female was found to be in cardiac arrest with CPR being performed by Oakland County Sheriff's Deputy. Independence Fire Advanced Life Support firefighters took over for patient care, initiating advanced cardiac life support protocols and treatment which included advanced airway, defibrillation, IV administration of cardiac drug therapies. After 10 minutes of treatment, the patient regained pulses and was prepared for transport. During transport, several more doses of cardiac drugs were administered to maintain the patient's blood pressure. Additionally, the patient began breathing on her own to the point that the advanced airway had to be removed. It was at this point that the patient began to communicate through eye blinks and head movement during transport. The patient was transported to a local emergency room and care was transferred over to the hospital. I am extremely pleased to report that this patient was discharged home with no deficits three weeks later. The quick response, excellent patient care and professionalism by these gentlemen not only saved her life, but also allowed her to recuperate with no lingering effects of her heart failure. They gave her a second chance at life and a second chance to be with her family and friends. Their work was tremendous. For their life-saving efforts and success this day, I'm very honored to present Lieutenant Sean Fitzpatrick, firefighter Ron Bray, firefighter Tom Nicholson, firefighter Caleb Harless, who is not here this evening, and firefighter Chris Bagarres, the Independence Township distinguished service award and life-saving award. All of you should be extremely proud. Okay, if I could call up Captain Pat Stamper, firefighter Wilson, excuse me, Lieutenant My mistake, I'm sorry. Firefighter Lenz, firefighter Bray. On September 3rd, 2022, IFD responded to a call for help at a dialysis center for an unresponsive patient. First arriving fire, fire crews found a male patient in cardiac, cardiac arrest with dialysis staff performing CPR. IFD Advanced Life Support firefighters took over patient care and initiated advanced cardiac life support protocols and treatment which included an advanced airway, three defibrillations, multiple doses of a variety of life-saving cardiac drugs, established an IV. After approximately 17 minutes of CPR and advanced life-saving interventions, the patient regained pulses and was prepared for transport to the emergency room. Additionally, during transport, the patient began breathing on his own and drug therapies continued to maintain his blood pressure. Patient care was then transferred over to the hospital staff and I'm extremely pleased to report that this patient was discharged from the hospital 19 days later. The quick response, excellent patient care and professionalism by these firefighters saved this gentleman's life. They gave him a second chance at life and again, a second chance to be with his family and his friends. This was outstanding, outstanding work by all of you firefighters. For their life-saving efforts and success this day, I'm very honored to present Captain Pat Stamper, Lieutenant Fire Inspector Nick Wilson, firefighter Al Lenz and firefighter Caleb Harless, who is not here this evening, and firefighter Bray, the Independence Fire Department distinguished service award and life-saving award. Again, all of you should be extremely proud. Okay, can I call up Captain Pat Stamper again? Captain Derek Stamper, firefighter Conkle, firefighter Lenz, who is not here with us this evening, would also be a part of this, firefighter Hiltner and firefighter Sampson. On September 18th, 2022, IFD was dispatched to a report of a male patient not breathing. Upon arrival of the first crews, the patient was in the basement on a couch in cardiac arrest. The patient was quickly relocated to the floor and fire crews began CPR and initiated advanced cardiac life support protocols and treatments. That included the establishment of an advanced airway, IV administration, six cardiac defibrillation shocks, multiple doses of cardiac drug therapy. After 18 minutes of treatment, the patient regained a pulse and was prepared for transport to a local emergency room. During transport, a pulse, missed my line, after 18 minutes of treatment, the patient regained a pulse and was prepared for transport to the emergency room. During the transport to the ER, the patient began to breathe on his own. I am extremely pleased to report that this patient was discharged home with no deficits after 11 days at the hospital. The quick response, excellent patient care and professionalism by these firefighters not only saved this gentleman's life, but allowed him to recuperate with no lingering effects from his heart failure. Our firefighters' actions have allowed this gentleman a second chance at life, a second chance to be with his family and friends. Their work, their efforts, nothing short of tremendous. For their life-saving efforts and success this day, I am very honored to present Captain Pat Stamper, Captain Derek Stamper, firefighter Conkle, firefighter Lenz, firefighter Hiltner and firefighter Sampson, the Independence Fire Department distinguished service award and life-saving award. Again, all of you should be extremely proud.
Okay, the last award of this evening, kind of a fun award, decided to do. If I mark the bracket, please bring that trophy up. So we've established the responder of the year award or trophy, as you see, and very simple criteria to earn this trophy. So this trophy will be given out once a year, the firefighter's name that will win it this evening and subsequent years will be on these nameplates moving forward and this will be displayed at the fire department for many, many years. And the criteria is very simple, whatever firefighter responded to the most runs in any given year will be given us a award. So for this year, I'm pleased to say that firefighter Al Lenz, who responded to 642 calls in 2022, and the guys are laughing because Al works a lot of overtime, so he gets to go on a lot more runs. So that's what the giggling's for, but either way, he responded to the most runs in 2022. We're proud to present this to him, but however, he had a, I believe, a family emergency of some sort and couldn't make it this evening, but Al should be proud, I think he'll be proud to win that trophy. And again, I'd just like to reiterate to the, all the firefighters here this evening that I know you guys are doing a great job out there in all your runs, day in, day out. It doesn't all get to be recognized, things get missed, you guys don't like telling us that you do good things. So please keep sharing the good information with us so we can keep rewarding you guys and honoring you guys the way you should be. So this is a great tradition to move forward with everybody and thanks again to the township for allowing this whole event to occur, I really appreciate it, so, thank you. One last thing and we'll get out of your hair here is, if you'd ask all the firefighters to come up front for a quick picture, please?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to call for a recess for five minutes.
Okay. Yeah. All in favor?
Yeah.
Right. If anybody from the families would like to come up?
Number one, request to approve the board of trustees regular closed session meeting minutes on September nineteen, twenty twenty-three.
People are saying they can't hear, because everyone's talking.
Oh. Yeah, it's not, this is not intended to, no. Okay. Okay. Second request to approve the October third, twenty twenty-three check run, including the ACH nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty-three cents, and ratified the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three payroll of three hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents, and the July and August twenty twenty-three wire EFT transfer activity of one million, eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And lastly, request to approve the Brady Lodge rental and alcohol November eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Solaris Parker, and that's all I got. So I need a motion for that consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, let's go to regular business. First, request to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three, request amendment to the twenty-two, twenty-four law enforcement services contract with Oakland County and add one patrol investigation. All right, so basically here, what we have is, we have a resolution that we need to, I mean passed, so we can provide that to Oakland County, and we have Lieutenant Cummings here, so he's going to tell us more about this.
Okay, so since it's been passed, I asked the undersheriff Charles what's the next step. The next step is for the township board to send a letter to the Oakland County Board Commissioners requesting to amend the current contract to add a patrol investigator position, which is the school resource officer, to the contract.
Any questions?
Just one comment, real quick. I guess the officer would be part of the contract that the township pays, even though part of his duties or time would be for the school, the private school. Is that correct?
The, the, it would be an eighty-twenty.
All right, but the, are we paying the sheriff department and the school paying us? How, what's the mechanics of that?
Brittany, can you come to a friend and explain?
Yes. Good evening. So the way it works is you add your patrol investigator, and that is under your contract with Oakland County. So you pay Oakland County for that position. However, you enter into a separate contract with the school where you share the cost.
The township has that contract with the school?
That will be forthcoming. We wanted to ensure that you could get that employee first before we end up entering into a contract with Everest. So what we're doing is we're contacting the county, saying we're interested in adding this patrol investigator. You know, are you amenable to amending our contract before we contract with Everest with an employee we don't have? Basically, we don't have the position right now.
All right. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Tracy Brown?
Well, I guess the question's going to be, what happens if we, this essentially would add, add, add the officer without us having the contract with the school?
No, so we actually have to request the county prepare the amendment, so the amendment will come back to this board. So that's it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
And maybe it was just, wasn't intentional, but you said it was going to be paid eighty-twenty, but we, we talked about that not being the case. This is going to be paid based on the number of hours worked at the school versus the number of hours worked in the township. Because eighty-twenty will give us, we're paying twenty percent for an officer who's going to be off most, a lot of the summer. And so we, we had discussed as a board that, I just want to make sure, when that contract is done with the school, it was going to be figured out how we would know how many working hours there were for that deputy, and the hours worked at the school was their portion as a percentage of the total package, and the hours worked in the township would be the other percentage. And that would allow us to ensure residents that their tax dollars aren't being used to pay for an officer at a private school. And I had people call and ask about that. I think several of us did, and we explained it that way. So when I hear eighty-twenty again, that's, I don't believe that's the intent. I just want to make sure our legal counsel understands it.
When, when the contract comes before you, it will represent that arrangement that was discussed, and I believe that the school, when they came last time to your board meeting, they represented they were amenable to that arrangement. So we will prepare the contract accordingly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Trust me, Mar. On that point, just to verify, and then we're going to split vacation?
Yes. Because it's, I believe right now it's fifty-fifty, is my understanding.
That's what was in the package.
Yes.
Wait a minute. What's fifty-fifty?
The vacation pay.
Why would I split the vacation pay in any other method than how many hours are worked? If their working hours make up eighty percent of their work time and twenty percent of the work times in the township, we're going to pay twenty percent of the vacation pay. If, if that, that's the only reason to look at the hours that were worked. Why would I pay fifty-fifty? That's...
It was my understanding that that was discussed at the last meeting. If that's not your understanding, the contract's not even drafted. We can make sure that's all covered. You're not even going to have a contract.
Okay. We'll look at it when the contract comes, because that's...
I don't believe that was discussed.
That was never discussed, fifty-fifty, no.
Okay. Good point. Thank you, Paul. I agree with you.
That's why I brought it up. That's why he says an agreement.
All right. Yes.
Just to make some more comments, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of having more police staff whenever we can get it, and, and if, I think the only question is, what we're dealing with is a private entity that wants, wants to have a sheriff's officer there, and I guess we're not, I guess, we don't want to be using taxpayer dollars to substitute, subsidize the private entity, so, but if we can, if we can have another officer for even a period of time, I think it's a positive. We just need to make sure we have the proper contract and proper documentation to, to show the residents that they're not subsidizing the private entity as well, so.
It's not happening, correct?
Well, in the last meeting, that was brought up, and I think Mr. Kelly answered that question.
Yes, that's, that's a question, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, the intent is, I mean, when Everest came to my, to my office, I mean, they came with a request, I saw, due to what's going on in the borders, coming a lot of, is, according, I got data even for Lieutenant Cummings, a lot of illegal immigration coming to the north, coming to Oakland County. Some of the surrounding areas crime has been raised, and, I mean, a lot by a lot, and the school asking for protection, and they're willing to pay eighty percent. I say, why not? I mean, I, you know, I brought to the board, and we discussed, this is about getting another, another deputy here and have somebody else to help us, and not just in the school, but the twenty, twenty percent we're paying is to make sure our community's safe, so I think it's a good thing overall, so. All right, so somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one nine to request an amendment to the twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-four law enforcement services contract with Oakland County to add one patrol investigator and authorize the clerk to certify and file same and forward a copy to Oakland County.
I'd like to amend that to at least say that contingent upon successful contract with Everest.
I accept that.
Okay.
Can you second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion, okay. Second, now we have our budget analyst, Mr. Rick Jaggar. Rick, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have budget amendment number thirty-one, and this is the removal of the Neighborhood Road Improvement Project and General CIP Projects. So basically, the general fund, they utilize millage dollars to pay for capital projects on township properties, primarily in the Parks Division of the PRS Fund, and then there are some road-related projects as well that are approved by the Township Board. These projects are budgeted pretty much every year, but due to various circumstances, some of these projects just don't get done. The removal of these projects brings the budget more in line with reality and helps form up the true fund balance. And this is important because the general, Parks and Rock, and General CIP Funds are going to be presented at the October twenty-fourth board meeting. And if these projects are not removed, they will distort the ending fund balances for twenty twenty-three, which in turn will then distort the balances for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So what projects are being removed? Within the general fund, the Neighborhood Road Improvement Project. We have been budgeting this for many years now. The general fund has been funding it along with the police fund, and this year, I haven't heard of anything that's happening, so I do want to remove the hundred and fifty thousand that the general fund puts in. There is the fifty thousand that's still there from the police fund. We did not remove that because it has no impact on the bottom line. So the hundred and fifty we'd like to remove. Moving on to the General CIP Fund, there's a number of different projects here. Interior painting of Town Hall, both upstairs and downstairs, we're pushing that out to twenty twenty-four, so we will rebudget that. New carpeting throughout Town Hall also been canceled for twenty-three and rebudgeted in twenty-four. We have new furnaces. We were hoping to get new furnaces for Town Hall this year, but we're having some issues with vendors and getting the product, so we decided to push it off until twenty-four. The Walden Road construction costs, this is a big one. This is just over a million dollars that we had set aside, and we're not going to need pretty much any of that. The remaining funds from the Bay Court Garage renovation, there's about almost seventy thousand dollars left there that we can remove. And then Clintonwood Park Tennis and Basketball Court Resurfacing has been pushed off to twenty twenty-four due to the vendor not being, he's just basically too busy to get it done this year, so we're going to do have that done in twenty twenty-four. And then last but not least, there's a new Gator utility vehicle that was planned in twenty-three that has also been pushed off to, I believe, twenty-four as well. Those are the items.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, on the Neighborhood Road Improvement Project, that money is not taxpayer dollars. That's money that came from, I guess, like our Wade Master program, whatever?
That's the police portion of it, but the rest of it has been put up by the general fund, yes.
I'm just talking about the, I guess, that portion that, that we get from, from the police fund, that we keep that, we at least keep that in the pool. We're not canceling that money.
That's correct. That is correct.
All right. That was one of my questions. So Rick, last year, I think we only contributed about five thousand dollars.
It wasn't much. It was probably in the range.
Subdivision off of Clarkston Road.
Wing Gate?
Yeah, Wing Gate. And so I definitely don't want to deplete that fund any less, because I don't think that we've promoted that program as well as we could, you know, and we'll be able to do that better now with Laura working with us, because with the deteriorating roads, we've got to encourage subdivisions to fix their roads, and we need to be able to offer them some kind of money to do it. So I'm definitely not, if that, I think that, you know, dropping it to fifty grand, since we only spent five grand last year, is reasonable, and then hopefully next year we'll want to ramp it up, because people are actually utilizing the program to make road improvements.
We're going to budget the hundred and fifty again, along with the fifty from police, so we'll still have the two hundred out there next year.
For next year, okay.
Until we're told that we're not going to do the project any longer.
Okay, and then the other last thing, on the Clintonwood Bay Court, I mean, on Bay Court Garage, is that money still floating in there for next year also?
Absolutely. We rebudgeted the sixteen ninety-five along with the ARPA funds that we have available for that project, so you're...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Tracy Brown?
Piggybacking on, on Sam's comments relative to the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, we've had multiple years where we budgeted money that was never spent.
That's correct.
And I, I guess I'd like to see us keep track of that, because my fear is, in the next couple of years, we're going to see that potentially a steep decline in, in oil price, which is a big driver for the cost of asphalting and paving. and the hours worked at the school was their portion as a percentage of the total package, and the hours worked in the township would be the other percentage. And that would allow us to ensure residents that their tax dollars aren't being used to pay for s- uh, uh, an officer at a private school. And I had people call and ask about that. I think several of us did, and we explained it that way. So, when I hear eighty-twenty again, that's, I don't believe that's the intent. I just want to make sure our legal counsel understands it.
That's accurate. When, when the contract comes before you, um, it will represent that arrangement that was discussed. And I believe that the school, when they came last time to your board meeting, they represented they were amenable to that arrangement, so we will prepare the contract accordingly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Trust me, Mar.
On that point, just to verify, and then we're going to split vacation?
Yes. It's, I believe right now it's fifty-fifty is my understanding.
That's what was in the package.
Yes.
Wait a minute. What's fifty-fifty?
The vacation pay.
Why would I split the vacation pay in any, any other method than how many hours were worked? If their working hours make up eighty percent of their work time and twenty percent of the work times in the township, we're going to pay twenty percent of the vacation pay. If, if that, that's the only reason to look at the hours that were worked. Why would I pay fifty-fifty? That, that's...
It was my understanding that that was discussed at the last meeting. If that's not your understanding, the contract's not even been drafted. We can make sure that's all covered. You're not even going to have a contract.
Okay, we'll look at it when the contract comes, because that's...
I, I don't believe that was discussed at the...
That was never discussed, fifty-fifty, no.
Okay, good point. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I agree with you.
Well, that's why I brought it up. That's why it says in agreement.
All right. Yes, uh...
Yeah, I guess, just to make some more comments, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of having more, uh, uh, police staff whenever we can get it, and, uh, uh, and if, I think the only question is, uh, what we're dealing with is a private entity that wants, wants to have a sheriff's officer there. And, uh, uh, I guess we're not, uh, I guess, we don't want to be using taxpayer di- dollars to substitute, subsidize the private entity, so, uh, but if we can, uh, if we can have another officer for even a period of time, I think it's a positive. We just need to make sure we have the proper contract and proper documentation to, uh, to show, uh, the residents that, uh, they're not subsidizing the private entity as well, so.
It's not happening, correct?
Well, in the last meeting that was brought up, and I think Mr. Kelly answered that question.
Yes, that's, that's our question, yeah.
Very good.
Wait, yeah, the intent is, uh, I mean, when everybody's come to my, uh, to my office, I mean, they came with a request. I saw, due to what's going on in the borders, coming a lot of, is, is, according, I got data even for Lieutenant Commons, a lot of illegal immigration coming to the north, coming to Oakland County. Some of the surrounding areas crime has been raised, and, I mean, a lot by a lot. And the school asking for protection, and they're willing to pay eighty percent. I say, why not? I mean, I, you know, I, I brought to the board and we discussed, this is about getting another, another deputy here and have somebody else to help us, and not just in the school, but the twenty, twenty percent we're paying is to make sure our community's safe, so I think it's a good thing overall, so. All right, so, somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023 dash zero-one-nine to request an amendment to the 2022 dash 2024 Law Enforcement Services Contract with Oakland County to add one patrol investigator and authorize the clerk to certify and file same and forward a copy to Oakland County.
I'd like to amend that to at least say that contingent upon, uh, successful contract with Everest.
I accept that.
Okay.
Can you second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you, second, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, come on, second. Second, now we have, uh, or by it and analyst, uh, Mr. Rick Jaggar. Rick, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight we have Budget Amendment Number Thirty-One, and this is the removal of the, uh, Neighborhood Road Improvement Project and General CIP Projects. So, basically, the General Fund, they utilize millage dollars to pay for capital projects on township properties, primarily in the Parks Division of the, uh, PRS Fund, and then, uh, there are some road-related projects as well that are approved by the Township Board. These projects are budgeted pretty much every year, but due to various circumstances, some of these projects just don't get done. Uh, the removal of these projects brings the budget more in line with reality and helps form up the true fund balance. And this is important because the General, Parks and Rec, and General CIP Funds are going to be presented at the October twenty-fourth board meeting. And if these projects are not removed, they will distort the ending fund balances for 2023, which in turn will then distort the balances for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So, what projects are being removed? Within the General Fund, the Neighborhood Road Improvement Project. Uh, we have been budgeting this for many years now. Uh, the General Fund has been funding it along with the Police Fund. And, uh, this year I haven't heard of anything that's happening, so I do want to remove the hundred-and-fifty thousand that the General Fund puts in. There is the fifty thousand that's still there from the Police Fund. We did not remove that because it has no impact on the bottom line. Um, so, the hundred-and-fifty we'd like to remove. Moving on to the General CIP Fund, there's a number of different projects here. Uh, interior painting of Town Hall, both upstairs and downstairs, we're pushing that out to 2024, so we will re-budget that. Uh, new carpeting throughout Town Hall, uh, also, uh, been canceled for '23 and re-budgeted in '24. We have new furnaces. We were hoping to get new furnaces for Town Hall this year, but we're having some issues with vendors and getting the product, so we decided to push it off until '24. Uh, the Walton Road construction costs, this is a big one. This is just over a million dollars that we had set aside, and we're not going to need pretty much any of that. Um, the remaining funds from the Bay Court Garage renovation, there's about almost seventy thousand dollars left there that we can remove. And then Clintonwood Park Tennis and Basketball Court Resurfacing, uh, has been pushed off to 2024 due to the vendor not being, he's just basically too busy to get it done this year, so we're going to do have that done in 2024. And then, last but not least, there's a new Gator utility vehicle that was planned in '23 that has also been pushed off to, I believe, '24 as well. Those are the items.
Any questions? Uh, Trust me, Mar.
Yeah, on the, uh, Neighborhood Road Improvement Project, um, that money, uh, is not taxpayer dollars. That's money that came from, uh, uh, I guess, like, our Wade Master program, whatever?
That's the Police portion of it, but the rest of it has been put up by the General Fund, yes.
Well, I'm just talking about the, I guess, that portion that, uh, that we get from, from the Police Fund.
Yes, that is from their, from their ticketing efforts.
That we keep that, we at least keep that in the pool. We're not canceling that money.
That's correct. That is correct.
All right.
That was one of my questions. So, Rick, last year I think we only contributed about five thousand dollars?
It wasn't much. It was probably in the range.
Subdivision off of Clarkston Road.
Win, Win Gate?
Yeah, Win Gate, and, um, so I definitely don't want to deplete that fund any less because I don't think that we've promoted that program as well as we could, you know? And we'll be able to do that better now with, uh, Laura working with us, because with the deteriorating roads, um, we've got to encourage subdivisions to fix their roads, and we need to be able to offer them some kind of money to do it. So, I'm definitely not in, if that, I think that, you know, dropping it to fifty grand, since we only spent five grand last year, is reasonable, and then hopefully next year we'll want to ramp it up because people are actually utilizing the program to make road improvements.
We're going to budget the hundred-and-fifty again, along with the fifty from Police. So, we'll still have the two-hundred out there next year.
For next year, okay.
Until we're told that we're not going to do the project any longer.
Okay, and then the other last thing, on the Clintonwood, uh, Bay Court, I mean, on Bay Court Garage, is that money still floating in there for next year also?
Absolutely. We rebudgeted the sixteen-nine-five along with the ARPA funds that we have available for that project, so you're...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thresher Brown?
Um, piggybacking on, on Sam's comments relative to the Neighborhood Road Improvement Program, we've had multiple years where we budgeted money that was never spent.
That's correct.
And I, I guess I'd like to see us keep track of that, because my fear is, in the next couple of years, we're going to see that potentially a steep decline in, in oil price, which is a big driver for the cost of asphalting and paving. And if inflation turns a little bit in the other direction, what I don't want to see happen is a bunch of people all at once try to do the projects, and we're giving them, you know, a penny on the dollar versus what we really hope to. And hopefully the Board would have some ability to potentially increase that amount based on non-usage in prior periods. So, if that's something that could be, could be looked at.
Yeah, I believe that's part of the agreement already, that those funds can carry over. But there just hasn't been any use for them yet.
No.
You know, I mean, at least besides just a few dollars here and there, nothing big.
Yeah, most construction costs have just been too high for folks to, to, to stomach, and if, if things can change a little, we could see that change, so.
Right, and I think it's kept at ten, ten percent or fifty grand of the project, so.
But like, it's one of those things, it takes a long time to get a, um, a program to, you know, get a subdivision to agree and get all the paperwork done, and, you know, if you decide now, it'd take you a year to, to get going. So, I, to me, we just need to keep hanging the money, keep promoting it, like you said, and hopefully we can get more people to, uh, take advantage of the, of the program, so.
Sure. All right, thank you, Rick. Um, okay, somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2023 Budget Amendment Number Thirty-One as presented.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our finance, Finance Director, Linda Benz. Hi, Linda.
Good evening. Um, today I am, uh, requesting to accept proposal for Professional Services Annual Financial Audit Fiscal Years Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five. Um, we went out for RFP at, I did, at the Board's request this spring. Um, we met as a committee. We had five, four bids and, and then a letter from Plant Moran, which was our previous provider. Um, the Audit Committee reviewed the bids, and we all collaboratively agreed that we would recommend the firm Yo and Yo. Um, and you, in your packet, you could see all of their credentials and then the bid proposal packet. Um, I believe online, if anyone has any questions for the new firm, Representative is, is there waiting? Um, I'm sorry, his name isn't, I lost my, my memory here, and Alan. I'm sorry, pardon?
Looks like Alan.
Alan Penter?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, or you can chime in if, if you need.
Any questions?
Just making a comment, as part of the Audit Advisory Committee, I guess we, you know, we, uh, we talked about our current, uh, provider, which, you know, is, uh, Plant Moran's has done, uh, done our books for a number of years, so, but they, uh, they have been increasing, uh, pricing, and, uh, uh, I guess this last year was even a larger increase than I expected, so, uh, so that precipitated us, you know, to want to get other bids. And, uh, we feel very comfortable that, you know, that we have a, a solid choice to, to pick from, so. So, I, I'll just let you know the committee's thoughts on that, so.
Okay, thank you. Cloud Newwick?
I just wanted to comment, uh, and follow up with what Ron said, or Trustee Richie said, that, um, the increase that our current provider, um, brought forth was outside of a budgeted agreement, so that was a bit of a surprise to us as well. And, uh, I did also want to mention that Linda, I think, had put it in the packet, but she also did call on references on this company and, uh, received some glowing reports on that, so. Um, we're excited to move forward with the new firm, and I'm sure we'll be meeting them soon.
Thresher Brown? Well, I'll just add to, to this. I'm also on the Audit Committee, and, uh, I'm, I'm also a CPA. And, and what I know is that, um, CPAs are just like everybody else, and you can sort of get, you know, into your normal process of things, and having a fresh set of eyes is a good thing for the township. It's a good, good thing for the Finance Department, uh, because while they're not going to, you know, tell us how to do things better, which they can't, because they have to stay independent, they can certainly say, this is something that, that looks like you should look at doing something different. And that's their hint to say, hey, how about, we have to then say, what can we do differently, and we investigate that. So, it's a good thing to make a change once in a while and get a different perspective. Uh, and I, I know the Finance Department's looking forward to it, and, so I think it's a good thing.
Any other questions or comments?
Did the Representative want to say anything, do you know, or is he just on for questions?
Uh, he was on for questions. I'm not sure. I can't see if he's unmuted.
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay, there he is. Okay, I couldn't tell if they unmuted him. Hello? Do you have any comments or information you'd like to provide us?
Uh, not really. I'm just, uh, very, uh, pleased to, uh, be receiving the recommendation. Um, we put together our bid, uh, you know, with the, with the intention of, uh, providing a quality service to Independence Township. Um, I am also a resident of Independence Township, so it's, it was important to me to put together something for the, um, for the Board's consideration, uh, that, that reflected positively on our firm. We, I've, I've been doing these audits for a long time. Uh, I've got thirty-four years of experience. I'll be leading the team. Um, you'll definitely see a team approach to this, not just one person. So, I, I look forward to, uh, to serving Independence Township and, and, and being involved, uh, going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, Thresher Brown?
One last, just one last comment. I, I compliment you on, on sticking to it. The firm has bid on, on our auditing services every time it's been put out, going back to at least back in 2012 when I first, uh, was elected, so. They, they've wanted this job, and they've, they've stayed after trying to get it, so.
Thank you. There wasn't always somebody at the firm who lived in the township, but now there is.
Okay. All right, I need a mo- a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal received from Yo and Yo CPAs and Advisors of Auburn Hills, Michigan for Professional Services to conduct the annual financial audit for fiscal years Twenty-three, Twenty-four, and Twenty-five as presented in the technical proposal and in an amount not to exceed the professional fees as they appear in the fee proposal.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Next is our DPW Director, Dave McKee. Hi, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight? Quite a presentation by the Fire Department. I'm quite impressed with that, and I'm proud to work for this community, because that, uh...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was good. That was very good. I, I really liked that. So, uh, tonight, uh, I'm here before you to, uh, just give you a little recap. If the Board recalls, we had issues with the, um, underground fuels tanks that we have at Department of Public Works um, in October of '22. Board authorized engineering services, so we could do design to install, to design a new, um, fueling depot for all township vehicles. It's everything we own, all centralized fueling stations. We've kind of spread out a little bit between Public Works and, um, Fire Station Two, and we got rid of those, so. Now, with underground storage tanks, we have an issue with our diesel tanks. There's nothing's leaked in the ground. They're a double-wall tank. The inner tank has failed, so we're still, we're still in pretty good shape right there. So, with that, we went out for a bid. In June of this year, we went out for a bid, because the design phase was completed. And we went out for a bid, and, uh, we received three bids to, to, uh, construct a new fueling depot. So, tonight I'm here before you to, uh, get, uh, Board approval to award the contract for the construction of our new fuel depot to RW Mercer from Redford, Michigan. Um, just a brief overview on what's going to be, uh, what's going to be installed is, this is going to be above-ground tanks. We're not putting anything in the ground anymore. It's just way, it's not environmentally friendly, friendly. They last a lot longer, and if there is issues, you can see something happening. Um, it's going to be a proper facility, and, um, it should last for many, 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 many years, uh, for the township, so. Uh, if I have any questions on there?
Any question from Board members?
No? Where, where exactly is it going, Dave?
So, in the Board Pack, you know, that's, if, if, uh, if you're familiar with DPW property, when you pull into the main gate, currently right now, if you go off to the right, we have a fenced-in area right now. It's a larger area, and that's where we keep, um, some of our seasonal equipment, some of the stuff that goes to auction or, or goes on eBay asset disposal. That's going to be the main area right there. So, in the Board Packet, there's the design, is, um, the, uh, construction drawings are in there, and it shows you how the egress is going to be, in and out. It's going to be very smooth. It's going to be a lot of concrete, which is good, uh, because the big trucks will definitely tear up asphalt. Um, we did, uh, our, part of our design phase is we took the largest vehicle that this township has, which I believe is the Quint Fire Truck that the Fire Department has, and then added a couple of feet, because if a semi comes in, we don't want them. Got to make sure there's nice, lots of room. We got all kinds of room right there. So, essentially, it'll be under the left-hand side of the, uh, main drive as you pull into the Department of Public Works. It is secure, and, um, there'll be lighting and landscaping, of course. We went to the Planning Commission. Uh, we had to get a special land use permit. Planning Commission chimed in. They liked our plan, so that's where we went with it.
What's the, uh, how does the dispersment and track, tracking work now? If everyone's going to the same depot, is it all like on a credit card or something?
So, that's one of the things that we're going to explore.
Employee ID or...
Yeah, so, there's several options you can do. So, we're going to get it built, and then there's different options that we can get for dispensing accountability. I can guarantee you that what we're going to have is real-time accountability per department. We really want to look into different methods that we can do there. I mean, the sky's the limit. If you spend a whole, tons and tons and tons of money to get something that's like the Cadillac, we don't need that. What we need is something that can, is user-friendly and accountability. That is the key, right? Because currently, the way we do it now, um, it is cumbersome, and we use an archaic system, and we rebuild each department. We have to do a report, and we say, okay, Fire used, you know, a thousand gallons today, and Parks and Rec used for this month, and Parks and Rec used four hundred of this. And we actually physically write a rebuild, and we physically rebuild each department because Public Works purchases all the fuel, so we need to be reimbursed for that. So, this way it'll be, it's essentially, we'll automate it, what we're going to go through.
So, if it's going to be done by May, what, who's working on that project, and who's paying? How's it being paid for? If we're going to be up and running by May, we, obviously, we're going to have that all figured out sooner than later.
Correct.
Before it's built, I would assume.
Correct. Yeah, funding for that, we've had internal discussions, several internal discussions on that from, I don't know, A to Z, Rick. I mean, I, I don't know what, uh, I have my opinion on that. Um, it should be ARPA funding, but then again, there could be, uh, you break it up in department usage. There's different ways that it could be, that can be managed, and how the, um, the cost of the project overall spread the whole cost of project out amongst, uh, the other departments, or we use the federal funding as, that is eligible to be spent on all of it.
But you're driving that. You're going to be overseeing that to get to that finish line?
I'll be, I'll be taking direction from full-time electives and internally from the finance people.
Well, I get it, but somebody's got to acquire all the systems and make a presentation and put it all together.
I'm going to build it and have the system, and, you know, the number we have on here is going to do everything.
Right.
Including the system, I got all that. It's the, you're looking for financing.
No, I'm just looking to see who's taking it to the finish line, you know, and that's you, with the plan of keeping it all together.
But I need, but direction on financing will be coming from electors.
Like how much we charge per gallon is still up in the air, so.
Correct. But as, as you see, there's three bids. There was, I want to point out that if you look on the numbers that came in for the bids, there's one substantial difference, you know? So, I just want to make it clear, we interviewed these folks, RW Mercer. It's kind of what they do. That's, you know, they're, they're, we're like, you guys are a lot cheaper, I mean, essentially, which is great for us, but we wanted to make sure that, uh, we're getting what we're advertising to get. And they do most of the stuff in-house. They don't contract a lot of stuff out, a lot of the high-dollar stuff that perhaps the other companies do. This is what they told us. This is, we don't do that. We keep as much in-house, and they're very good. And their resume is pretty, pretty stout. I mean, they do Speedway gas stations, Krogers, and Mugs and Bob's, and all those other ones that they, that's over by my house. I just kind of threw that out there. But that's what they do, mobile stations, where they, they have all that, so. We vetted them out in there. They do, they do excellent work.
Any other comments or questions from Board members? No? Okay, you need a motion?
I'll move to accept the competitively bid, uh, proposal received from RW Mercer of Redford, Michigan for Professional Services associated with the construction of a new fuel farm as outlined in the amount not to exceed seven-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand, six-hundred-forty-eight dollars, sixteen, or eighteen cents, plus a ten percent contingency amount of eighty thousand dollars for a total project cost of eight-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand, six-hundred-forty-eight dollars, eighteen cents. And direct the supervisor to sign the contract and approve any change orders as authorized, as the authorized representative of the township.
Okay, motion has made?
I'll support.
Okay, motion made and seconded, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
Lastly, um, I have, um, a special request from the Open Space, um, Committee. They sent me a recommendation, and I bring that to the Board today. It's about, um, as you guys probably aware, I mean, I have been getting a lot of, I did get a lot of phone calls, emails, and I talked to several people in the township regarding the, the trees, you know, what's going on. I mean, it has been some clearings, I mean, as you see. And they brought to my attention, and also the Open Space Committee also brought to my attention a recommendation about that. And, uh, that's what I presented today, is recommendation for the Open Space Committee. But before I, I will start with the Board, and I was, I was talking with some residents. They, they came and told me they can stay into too late, so I would like to actually let them speak up first, if, if you guys are okay, to the residents speak up, because some of them have to leave, um, early. Are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
All right, so, I would like to open the, so you, anyone that would like to speak up about this subject that can name, can bring your name and address and come to the podium. Um, I just want to be clear, this is no a debate or a forum, it's not, you know, we're not talking about any employee performance or anything. This is about this subject tonight. Yeah, please, Joy.
Uh, thank you for the time. Um, as a member of the Open Space Committee, um...
And Joy, your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joy Kuntz, nine-seven-four-O Reese Road, Clarkston. As a, a member of the Open Space Committee, um, we would like to request the Township Board to place a pause, uh, of ninety days, so that would make it into January, on clear-cutting trees in the township, um, while the Board and the Board's Attorney and the Open Space Committee, uh, work together to do some research on a tree ordinance for our, um, community. I've looked at the clear-cutting over on Sashba Road or behind the mobile station, behind Tim Horton's. Um, there's a lot of marshland in there. There's a lot of trees in there. We don't know whether those are, um, native trees or, uh, not. Um, you know, trees can be used, as we look at open spaces, they can be used as site barriers. They can be used as animal, animal habitat, um, greenways for, where animals travel from one side to the other, as well as oxygen. And I think it's probably time that we take a look at the trees. I don't think any of us want a ordinance that says you can't, um, uh, take down your maple tree in your yard. That's not what we're asking. Uh, but if you look at the size of those trees over behind the mobile station, they're big. Many of them are very big. They are not saplings. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. Please, state your name and address.
Hi, uh, David Hayward, uh, six-seven-six-four Berwick Drive. Um, one of the things that she didn't mention, the other thing that the trees provide is, uh, sound absorption. I live, if you take the, the power lines and go straight that way, just past the golf course, I live in the middle of there. I've lived there for almost ten years. Um, on occasion, on a warm night, I may hear, my windows open, I may hear drums from the high school. Not a problem. Since all these trees have been removed for the Walton Project and now behind, um, Tim Horton's, I hear, with my windows closed, I hear I-75 traffic. I hear music from Pine Knob. I hear the cheering from Pine Knob. I've never heard that before. This is with my windows closed. And I also hear, um, the announcer from football games now, and the drums, and, you know, basically, that's what you hear, the marching band, quite loud, um, again, with my windows closed. And I'm probably not, I know I'm not the only one, because I talk to my neighbors. They hear it too. So, my concern is, obviously, we can't put them back up, but what are we doing going forward to stop this from happening? Because it affects the people that live in the core of the township. Because it affects the people that live in the core of the township by this intersection and where almost all the building development is. It's obviously not going out on the, the edges of the township because it's still quite rural area. And I want to know what's going, if anything, or you plan on doing something that's going to correct that problem. I don't want, you know, I want to go to bed at nine, 10 o'clock at night and now I've got to hear Pine Knob with my windows closed. Why? Did anybody think when we decided we're going to go ahead and sell this property to Pulte and Meyer and whoever else? And they just going to cut down everything and start new? And, and like we've mentioned, some of these trees have been here for a long, they're, these aren't little trees. They've been here a long time and now they're just gone. And my question is, what's going to be done to find out how we can stop this in our township? And what's going to be done now to correct the problem with the sound that's traveling from Pine Knob and I-75 and the high school and everything else? Because now those trees are gone. They don't absorb the sound. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Sue Julian and I represent Blue Heron Headwaters Conservancy, 7150 Dixie Highway. I was impressed, of course, to hear the work of the Fire Department. They turn out to protect what we have. I think it's very wise of this board to place a moratorium on tree cutting so that it is possible to decide how to protect what you already have. So there are many people who could tell you the benefits of trees, the problems with clear-cutting. I think that it is advisable that you take time to consider what you really want for the township and what the citizens of the township want. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Oh, thanks.
My name is Marvine Anthony. I live at 10172 Wagoner Circle. And I just want to make a general comment on what's going on around here. We moved from Waterford 23 years ago and we moved from Waterford because it was turning ugly. And that is what's happening to Clarkston now. It's just getting ugly.
Thank you. Please come to the podium. Name and address.
Yeah, hi. My name is Vincent Bizone and I live at 7925 Foster Road in, in Clarkston. And I just thought maybe, hold on one second here. I wanted to offer a perspective, okay? And this is a poem and it's called Trees by Joyce Kilmer. And it says, "I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree. A tree whose hungry mouth is pressed against the earth, sweet flowing breast. A tree that looks at God all day and lifts her leafy limbs to pray. A tree that may in summer weave a nest of robins in her hair. Upon whose bosom now has lain, who intimately lives with rain. Poems are made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree." So when we're thinking about trees and preserving trees and it's just a perspective, that's, you know, a tree is a wonderful thing. And if we could preserve them, we should do that. That's all.
Thank you. Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first town hall meeting. I was excited to see this topic on the agenda. My name is Carla Allen. I'm at 7761 Park Crest Circle. I'm not representing Clarkston Ridge subdivision, but I, once I talk to everyone, I hope that I am at some point. My husband and I moved out here about 27 years ago and to this day we are still asked repeatedly, "Why did you move to Clarkston?" Your friends and your family and everything you do from certain markets to shopping activities with our nieces and nephews. Everything, and every weekend we're traveling 40, 50 miles to do that. And for 30 years, we say, have said, "It's worth the trip. It's worth our time to live far away from where we work and where we play because it's just a beautiful, beautiful township and beautiful city." So I'm just hoping that we will move forward with a plan to save some of the trees. I felt nauseous going through that Pulte development, but I know that that's just the beginning of the conversation and hope that, again, everyone takes it serious because Clarkston Independence Township is a beautiful, beautiful place to be and I hope it continues to be that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emily Dothan. I'm at 7020 Peninsula Court in Clarkston. We've heard a lot from many people about the beauty of trees and the importance of trees in making this community and I couldn't agree more with them. Everything they say is absolutely true. We have recently completed a, a work with a Eagle Scout who has completed a project on one of our properties on Dixie Highway near Neiman's Market. She planted a small urban woodlot and put up an interpretive sign describing the benefits of urban tree lots, small patches of woods and trees in suburban areas like this. How it improves water quality, prevents flooding, improves air quality, protects biodiversity and what makes our community so beautiful. Not to mention all the benefits of mental health that everybody has been talking about. It provides shading and cooling, reducing our cost for heating and cooling our home. Manages stormwater, which is getting to be more and more important as the weather gets crazier and crazier, we've all seen. Keeps pollutants out of waterways, provides a windbreak, makes topsoil, all these things that are so important. I have a copy of the sign that the Eagle Scout, Claire Butner, just installed on Dixie Highway. I'd be happy to give you a copy of this sign. And I hope that you do put forth this moratorium and study this ordinance. Many communities in Oakland County do have some sort of woodlands ordinance or tree ordinance protecting their trees and I would love to see Independence Township do that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Christina Sath. I live at 5500 Walden Road. And my question is a little bit different and I've had the same issue with my own property. I am right next door to the Pine Knob condos and I have a 10-acre parcel right there. For several years, I've made the township aware. I've asked for assistance as they cut down several trees and have infringed in several places, several feet onto my property. I have had the township try to assist in some way, but they continue to do this even this past week. I have been told that this is a property owner's responsibility. So I'm trying to see the board's stance on this to see whose responsibility is this? Is it the property owner to do what they wish with their property? I've been told that in order for me to protect my own property, I need to spend thousands of dollars to wall it off, put down fences. I've tried to get it staked. The condos immediately pull up the stakes. It's just an ongoing battle back and forth. So I'm trying to figure out from this, whose responsibility is it and what stance is being taken?
Okay. And this matter, I would like if you can come to my office tomorrow morning so we can talk about that.
Okay.
I can, actually, I can give you, before you leave, I'll give you my number, so you can call me tomorrow morning, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Mark Newsome. I live at 9410 Ortonville Road. I hope you guys consider a little bit more than like what happened across the street. It needs to come even further down. I know you can't stop a residential person from doing what they want to their own land. But if somebody comes before this board and gets like special land use, then you have something over them and you can control what they do. In my particular case, I have Bridgewood Church across the street from my house. Been there 20 years, dealt with it, whatever. And I filed complaints this last year after I learned that they were expanding. They're adding 30,000 more square feet. They want to have 1,000 people in that church. To do this, they have to do a lot to their land. One of them has cut all, not all, but a lot of trees. From my own looking, it's well over 50. And this is for the septic field. You can't replace any tree on top of a septic field. It don't work. So there's going to be this big open spot in the middle of these woods. Not only that, they have to have parking. They're going, this is another thing. When they originally built the church, it was approved for occupancy of 400 people. They put parking in for 100. According to township officials, I won't name any names, they banked more parking. I looked, I found, the only paperwork I could find was 12. I don't know what the ordinances are and how they go about doing that, if they have to get a building permit to add that banked on or not, how that works. They added almost 100. No permits were pulled. Trees were cut. I mean, this is why I'm saying you, you have to have some control over even the smallest of projects, not the large ones, all of them.
Thank you. Okay, please?
Linda Bizone, 7925 Foster Road, Clarkston, Michigan. I know we can't stop growth because growth is just a part of life, but I am asking that we pass this moratorium because we do need to be good stewards of our environment. And, you know, like some of the people mentioned, it was sickening to see all this land, all these trees just completely cleared out. And like I said, I mean, we can't stop some of the growth, but at least let's be good stewards of our community. We moved here, I've been part of this committee for 25 years because my church is here and I spend a lot of time here. And in 2017, I talked my husband into moving to Clarkston. And it's been an eye-opening to see, you know, the building and the tearing down of trees. And, and it is important that we be good stewards of our communities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Tony Jeans, 8795 Maplewood Avenue, Clarkston. My question is, when y'all vote on this, to rather do it, accept it or not, are you doing that tonight? You're voting on it tonight, right? Okay, never mind. I just wanted to know, if, if you do the memorandum, you're going to have another meeting before that timeframe runs out or how's that work? You're pausing the, or if you approve this, it pauses it for 90 days, right?
That's, that's what, yeah, that's what it is.
And then is there going to be another meeting before anything moves forward?
We're going to be looking into implementing some protection. It's what the intent is right now. For 90 days, just give us a time to look at it and implement some protections.
Yeah, but will you bring it forward to the, the people? Will we have another board meeting for it?
Yeah. Yeah, we will have another board meeting, yes.
And Planning Commission meetings.
Yeah, it's a process. After this is going to a process.
Then I guess my only question is, why, why wouldn't this pass? Is there any reason that, I mean, giving them 90, giving us 90 days to think about it, is there any reason that, does that hurt anybody else by, by you guys approving this and making them wait for 90 days?
You have to go to a process though. It's a process. It's not just, just tonight and they say this has to go to a process.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely, yeah.
You got no idea.
Yeah.
I, I know that I, I don't like to see any just random clear-cutting. I stopped at Tim Horton's on the way here. And the people at Tim Horton's told, we asked what they were building next to it and they, they said, oh, they're just, they're just cutting it and flattening it out. Right now, they don't know what's going in there. I don't know if they're true or that's what it is or not, but it's kind of crazy to just flatten everything out and...
It's more soundable.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. You can come.
I can't. Can I ask from here?
Well, I mean, you have to come to the podium and state your name.
She has disabilities.
Oh, disability, okay. All right, all right.
8795 Maplewood, Clarkston. My name's Tara Jeans. When we stopped there, there's still clear-cutting, correct? At Tim Horton's?
I was told that no, it stopped, but they're doing something else right now.
Because they still have equipment there, so are they going any further or is that it?
We don't know.
We, I guess we don't know, but.
There's no plan.
I don't know at this point what they're doing.
So they just cleared it with no plan?
That's correct.
Who approved that?
Yeah, all right.
You don't have to?
Okay, all right, we already, okay. Any other ques, any other comments from people? All right, please come to the podium, okay?
I have a question. Vincent Bizone, 9725 Foster Road. If you approve this moratorium and so that trees can't be cut for the next 90 days, right? That's what, I understand, that's what this is, right? How does that impact developers and development? Is that going to put a kink, so to speak, in some developers' schedule? Or how does that play into anything here? I'm just.
Yeah, it's probably, we're going in public comment right now. We will answer all those questions. This is public comment, yeah. Yes, come to the board. I opened it just so, because it was requested for some people, they want to leave early and that's why. Then the board is going to talk, yeah. All right. I guess, anyone online? No, I mean, it's your time to speak, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Typically, we would have comment after, after the board talks, though, right?
Sure, we can allow that.
I guess Mr. Ross asked him if he could reserve his comment for.
Yeah, you can talk. Okay. I guess nobody online would like to speak, so. All right, are we open up there? Anyone else we'd like to? Anyone else?
I would like to speak.
Okay, sure. State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name's Buzz Silverman. My work address is 121 West Long Lake Road in Hillville, Michigan, and many other properties in the Independence Township. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I've been developing property in the township, as all of you know, for close to 35 years. And we've enjoyed a good collaborative relationship as we built Lake Walden Village and Walden Forest, Walden Woods. Sashba Crossings condominium development is part of the property that you mentioned by the Tim Hortons. Where our Jakes's and the Department of Motor Vehicles office, all of those properties in there, just so that everyone remembers, 30 years ago, were zoned highway commercial when we bought the property. And we worked with the township. The township was concerned about not wanting to have big boxes on the property, even though it was zoned for it as highway commercial. Uh, and we worked in a collaborative manner with the township and changed the zoning to office service two and commercial two. Now, I don't see tonight, uh, your planning director, Brian Otman, or your planning consultant, who are involved with these ordinances, Dick Carlisle, present. Uh, but I'm sure many of the board members remember all of this. And, uh, and I think we developed very conscientiously in a very nice way. Um, just want to say, you know, when, when you have zoned property, uh, that is zoned commercial, like our property, and Independence Township has never had a, um, uh, has never been, uh, a community that's easy, uh, for developers. Because Independence Township has always been very, very careful with developers, which is why it's such a great place to live and work. And so, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, when, uh, we got involved in, uh, doing some preliminary clearing in accordance with the rules and regulations that exist today in the township, uh, we did communicate with the township. Uh, and we even used the same contractor that, uh, that Mr. Morocco uses. Uh, Sam, uh, uses, um, Mark Reese, just like us. So, because we want to make sure we're doing things correctly within every community we do business in. So, um, we pay taxes as a commercial property owner and we enjoy our commercial property rights. We're sure the township is going to carefully review the legal aesthetics of all of the comments that are going on tonight for the private property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anyone else? Okay.
I want to improve on that just a little bit.
Okay.
Joe Ecklins, nine seven four oh Reese Road. Uh, I appreciate, um, Buzz Silverman as a developer. But the reality is, if this township doesn't have any rules, then he, as a developer, is allowed to do whatever he chooses. So, we need to really think through what we as citizens want. Trees can be barriers. Now, that may not be what he would like to have, but trees can be barriers for sound. Trees can be barriers for beautification. Uh, not everybody needs to see square buildings. So, we need to really think about what we want. I know he's done a lot of development in the township. I'm not really, I mean, I've watched for four years the development there on Walden Road. It wasn't at all what was talked about in two thousand twenty. So, we need to be in control of our township, not the developers.
All right, I will open the floor now for the trustees. Any comments from board trustees?
Well, I'm going to start off because I'm on the open space committee. We were hoping that our vice chairman, Mr. Fisher, was going to be here tonight to make the presentation on behalf of the open space committee, but he's tied up at a meeting in Lake Angeles and, uh, unfortunately hasn't been able to come. So, had that happened and he spoke first, I think some clarity would have happened to what, what got us to this point, the urgency of it and where the open space committee wants to go. So, it's kind of been, I think we got a clear consensus of what the residents think should be done. And, uh, thank you Buzz for pointing out that I've used the same dirt hauler before. I'm not sure the relevance of it, but, um, uh, so, I'm going to read you what, uh, quickly, what the suggestion was by the Residential Open Space Committee to the township board and what they're seeking, so that everybody understands exactly what we're talking about. "In the interest of retaining natural open space, the advisory committee desires to preserve trees in areas that may never be developed in the future. The focus of the committee is upon areas of land on which improvements may not be proposed or constructed once a plan has been reviewed and approved by the township, and there are trees in such areas which will not prevent development. The proposal of the advisory committee will not needlessly prevent delay development in the township. The suggestion of the committee is for the township board to pass a motion to at least temporarily prevent the needless destruction of trees as follows. In order to prevent the needless destruction of trees in the township for a period of ninety days from the date of this motion, there shall be no tree removal on properties which are more than one acre in area, as well as on properties that will require site plan review. This motion does not apply to properties which have already received a building permit or final site plan approvals. The object is to give the planning commission and the township board the opportunity to determine whether more permanent tree preservation rules should be established in the township. During the ninety-day effective period of this motion, the township board may decide to discontinue the preservation or extend it for an additional limited ti- uh, period of time to determine whether and what regulations to adopt. Anyone with a hardship may appeal their situation to the township board, and if there are trees that present an immediate danger to life or property, a person may appeal to the three elected officials in the township." So, there was, there was some caveats put in there so that it wasn't going to be a hindrance to people in the township to review this. The primary focus of this by the Residential Open Space Committee was, as Buzz said, they're going onto a commercial piece of property with no approved site plan and they're clear cutting and filling land without any permits or oversight from the township, which currently is allowed. So, there's no tree ordinance, so they can cut down whatever trees in the township they want right now. There's no, uh, we don't monitor the storm sewers in the township, so they're just putting in, handling that however they want. Uh, they don't, we don't, apparently, I'm finding all this out since they started this, that we don't regulate the roads, uh, private roads. So, there's nobody inspecting the nine, eight or nine foot of fill that's going in under the future road that's been bringing in, and if any of you have seen the semis lined up down Sashaba for days and days and days hauling dirt in there, um, I'm not aware that we even know where the dirt's coming from or what the condition of the soils are that are being brought on the property. So, that sparked concern from the open space committee. Uh, we approached the planning department and the township, finding out that we don't have any regulations or any, any way of stopping this. This, I was on the planning commission for twenty years. I don't remember at any time that developers went onto commercial property and just started clear cutting and filling without any plan or permits that have been approved by the township. The reason that this is so concerning to the open space committee is that we don't know if there's wetlands on the property, we don't know where the water's going, we don't know, uh, if those trees are going to be needed, um, to buffer something, if they're going to be part of making it a better development, so we don't do any more clear cut development. So, we don't have any idea of what's going on or how to do a, a well-built plan. We have a greenways plan in the township that was done years ago that shows connectivity for animal movements and properties in the township where tree rows and different parcels are identified as being significant to that. If, if developers are allowed to go in and just, you know, they know that now we're not happy with this development across the street in the way that it was clear cut, and certainly there's no dispute that it could have been done much better, that the risk is that developers now, knowing that we have an open space committee, is that, um, they're going to just do that and they're going to just start cutting everything down and land balancing without any oversight, and then they don't have to deal with us at the end to create a good plan. So, that's the urgency and the concern. Uh, there wasn't any talk about, um, single-family homes, you know, being restricted or anything like that. It was, uh, the main focus, although the, the letters talks about one acre parcels, was really on projects that don't have a site plan so we can identify, um, natural resources that we would want to retain and possibly make concessions with a developer to preserve those areas while developing over in this area. And we're going to lose that negotiation and that ability to, to, uh, to do better developments in the township without some protection in place. So, there's been talk, uh, that, um, our procedures of going after this may not be right, and you'll hear about that in the meeting. But the urgency and the outcry of the residents for something and the risk that we, I feel, and the open space committee feels that we're at is why we're asking to find a way to stop developers from clear cutting large parcels and commercial properties and parcels that don't have an approved site plan, so that the planning commission and the township board and everybody can do business as usual, which is how we used to do it, which is, don't touch the land till you have a plan. Um, and that now has changed, um, with what's happening over on the other side of Sashaba. And that's where, why the call to arms has come out. And then you'll hear, uh, you know, from the attorneys and board members of what their opinions are on, um, why or why not we should do it. I don't think this is a perfect plan, but we need a plan and we need to figure out how to get to a plan to put a pause on it, to then come up with a cohesive plan that works, uh, in the best interests of the residents. That's my opinion, I can't take questions.
Yeah, we're not taking questions, okay. Any other board members?
I mean, it's up to them.
Okay, trustee Tony.
So, first off, I want to start off by saying I love the idea of retaining natural open space. I, I really do, and it's one of the things that I love about our area. And I've even heard it said several times that the intention is not to stop individual residents from cutting down their trees, but in the motion, it does say that we are stopping anyone that has one acre or more. And as much as I love retaining natural open space, something that I don't love is big government. I, I think that people, if they own personal property, they should be allowed to do with their property what they see fit, unless it's, you know, a safety concern or a nuisance or something morally wrong, or there, I'm sure there are other outliers. But in general, if someone owns personal property, even if I don't want them to cut their tree, and I really don't want them to, but it's their property, they should be allowed to. So, this including what it sounds like residents being hindered as well, I, I don't think this is a good idea.
Thank you, trustee Tony. Uh, Treshel Brown?
So, I bore you a little bit. Uh, my mom moved us here in nineteen sixty-eight over on, on Westview. And we had a little house over there, her and five kids. And my brother and I were out in the front yard, uh, the first, the first summer we were there, and I was seven at the time, he was a little older. And it's just a big open yard with no trees in it. Well, he, he grabbed a shovel and I followed him and hoped I don't get in trouble. We went to a vacant lot down the street and we dug up a, dug up a tree and carried it over there, planted it right in the front, right in the front yard. Our mom came home, she was so, she just couldn't believe that, she was really happy. That tree's still standing there today. So, I, so I just thought that was, I just thought of it as we were sitting here. I wanted to share that. And, uh, so, I, I, you know, there's been a lot of effort to try and save trees. In two thousand fifteen, I brought a motion to the board to have the elect, full-time electeds look at a woodlands ordinance. And I'll point out that it passed to have us look at that with a vote of five to one. And Supervisor Aliaga was a trustee at the time, voted against it, citing property rights and not wanting bigger government. I understand now he's changed his mind about that, which is fine, we all can change our minds. I, I initiated an effort to buy eighty acres of property and turn it into parks for the township back in seventeen. And we, we had designs out there, some of you will have seen those in the paper. And, and we tried to make that happen. Things come down to finances and that hasn't happened yet, certainly haven't given up on it. Now, as I look at this motion, I certainly have some concerns when a motion of this significance and this important comes before the board with no professionals here to answer questions for us or the residents and no legal opinion, legal opinion presented with it as of the issuance of the, of the motion. And, and I don't understand how we got to this point where we're trying to talk about this thing and not have already had that or the ability, we have an attorney here now, they're going to hear from them about it. And so, we'll see on that part, because I, I mean, I think we've seen the legal opinion, I certainly want it to be presented to you, you as well. To me, the more, the more important thing here is, is the tree ordinance. And what happened in fifteen when we tried to look at this. They're very complicated. They're not that hard to get set up, un- unless you want it to be bulletproof. And, and I'll give you an example, uh, and this is what we saw back then too. For example, how are we going to enforce this? If someone, if we were to put this in place and they violate it, what are we going to do? It doesn't say what the penalty is. And I'll tell you what happened in Canton Township who has a tree ordinance. And I think it was sixteen or seventeen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, a developer who was clearing out a drainage ditch, they essentially cleared their entire lot of a hundred and sixty trees. And they had a tree ordinance in place. And the township said, you're vi- in violation of the ordinance, you're going to, you're going to replant a hundred and sixty trees. Some of them were what we call, uh, landmark trees, and those would be indicating larger size trees. And, and they, they knew what trees they were because a significant amount of time and money was spent documenting what trees are there. Because how can you have a tree ordinance and, and call someone out for cutting a tree down if you don't know what was there? So, there's a lot to putting that together. The ordinance, uh, what they really call them is a woodlands ordinance. They can work. In this particular case, they told the person, you're planting a hundred and sixty trees, you're going to pay us fifty thousand dollars based on four hundred and fifty dollars per tree, that was their fine. And he said, we're going to take option C, and they sued. That case was settled in two thousand twenty-one in the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals. That's the, that's the last step before you end up at the Supreme Court of the United States. And while they found that certain portions, portions of that tree ordinance were, were okay, ultimately, part of it was seen as, as a violation of the Fifth Amendment, it was a taking of property, and they lost. They spent almost two hundred thousand dollars going to court to try and make someone spend fifty. A- a- and that's not good for taxpayers. And so, to me, and again, I, I support the idea of trying to look at a, at a, at a woodlands ordinance, but I think there's some other ways to do this, and we've already started accomplishing that. We purchased this thirty-eight acres of property over on Perry Lake Road, the board did. Those trees aren't going to get cut down, we can just about guarantee it, right? We tried to purchase park property, that's the easiest way. Find a way to buy property that we can control, because then we're the property owner, you're the property owner, and we can say, we're not cutting down trees. And we can't get in trouble for that part. Going down this path is going to be very expensive. I, I, I believe you're going to end up with a, with some type of a forester person on staff. The entire township will have to be surveyed for tree sizes and, and where are the landmark trees? And you're looking at six figures a year for some number of years to put that all together. The idea that we're going to be able to somehow make this happen tonight and come back in ninety days with a tree ordinance that doesn't get us sued, I don't know how that's possible, but I'll leave that to the experts. I can't ask the experts because they're not here. I believe Dick Carlisle has been involved in a number of these. We do have legal counsel here who will give us a legal opinion on this particular piece. And whether this is allowed, is voted to go through or not, doesn't mean we can't take another look at the woodlands ordinance. Because my understanding is because of this case, which I think any attorney who does government work knows about the Canton F and P development case. It is, it is statewide, they're all changing their woodland ordinances to account for this ruling so they don't get in trouble. So, it doesn't mean we can't do it, but it's not easy. And if you get it wrong, it's going to cost taxpayers a great deal of money. So, I want to hear the opinion from our legal counsel on this part. And whatever happens with this doesn't mean we can't still move forward and look at, maybe there's a better way to do the ordinances now that don't cost a hundred thousand dollars a year, because if that's what it costs, probably a no vote. I can't justify that to the taxpayers. So, my thoughts.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate that, Paul. Thanks, thanks for your coming. And thanks for bringing that up, the past. I remember during that time, there was brought it up, there was, um, a motion that was to actually stop everybody, not just commercial, but actually residential and people they owns or have a three hundred houses and are allowed to cut those trees. So, that's why I said I didn't support that. And this is different, this is totally different, different times too. We're talking about, uh, probably hundreds of trees having cut. And this is a recommendation came from the open space to me, and I said, why not? I'm going to bring it to the board, I cannot just keep it hiding in my desk. I think it's a concern for a lot of residents, I got several calls, even I, big people in the streets told me, Jose, I don't like what's going on. And I said, well, it's my responsibility to bring it to the board and have it to a discussion. And I think it's right, it's not like I voting for myself to raise my salary or something. Anyways, anyone would like to say something?
I just have a question about this. Should this have been presented as a public hearing instead of trying to throw a motion on the table for tonight? And I think maybe that would be set up, that's where you get the high school gym if you need to, for people to come and voice their opinion. And there is discussion back and forth. Because right now, it's just their comments, and then it's our comments, and nothing really gets resolved. And nothing really gets resolved unless we hear from legal. And we have those expert opinions to talk about. But a couple of comments I have. The stuff they're complaining about was approved years ago. So the stuff that people are taking out now on social media and everything, they're barking up the wrong tree.
Do you know what year?
Huh?
You know what year?
The last master plan.
Okay.
And now I'm curious if any of these people showed up at the master plan that was being approved this time around. It was, I don't know, it was posted everywhere. And secondly, some of the things they're angry about, when the building or whatever actually shows up, that seems to go away. Like were some of these people angry when the trees got knocked down from Mount Zion Church? Were some of these people angry when, you know, the Kroger and all that went up? It seems to be focused on one type of developer. And I think that's the part that gets me angry. You're either all in or you're not. So the poor people that happen to buy that corner are the ones feeling all of this. And I'm just wondering if people were that upset when everything else was being built and knocked down? That's my only question.
So you're saying Monseyan without site approvals or any approvals, they went there and cut all the trees and without any approval, is what you're saying?
No, but Walden Village isn't just chopping down trees with all approval. They were, that was all approved. Well, no, because some people mentioned that they moved here because their church is here. Well, the church had to be built by knocking down trees. Where I live, that subdivision was built by knocking down trees. But you know what? Once they're there, they were all replanted. There's great landscaping. It grows. So I'm just trying to do the other side of the coin. That it seems like just because it's a bigger development, you know, there are some big developments here. The ones with golf courses and all. Where was the uproar 20, 30 years ago over that? It was part of the master plan and it was coming.
All right.
Yes, Plany.
I have a question. Mr. Morocco said that the site plan has not been approved. And I believe that falls under, because it is a site condo, doesn't that fall under the Michigan Condominium Act? And I believe that the condo itself was recorded with the county in 2008. So I don't believe that a site condo ever expires when it falls under the Michigan Condominium Act.
Well, the site condo is the creation of the parts, of the pieces.
Yeah, but you said that's the actual site plan.
What makes this unique is that it's not about bigger government. We've always controlled what trees are removed from a property on all projects almost that are commercial developments. Across the street, the Planning Commission and the Township Board controlled every tree that was cut down over there. How many were cut down and how many needed to remain? Now, we can agree whether or not we thought that was, they did a good job of that or, but we, the Planning Commission and the Township Board has always regulated the site. You always have a developer tell you how big the building is, how much buffering we need, what the setbacks are, what trees we should preserve, where the stormwater retention is going to go, how to buffer that. We've always, since I've been on the Planning Commission, we've always controlled this. This is a unique situation where if we lose, if developers can start cutting down trees, we lose the ability to work with the developer to put in a good development. There's nobody saying that we don't want development. We know we can do a lot better than what we've been doing. Cause I drive all over the country and I see hundreds of communities that are developed way better than we do it and look way better. And they still have all the amenities and all the density and all the housings. There's just ways of buffering and protecting it and making it less seen. We just don't, haven't been implementing those policies to that level. So now all of a sudden, we don't know what's on that property, what could have been significant, how we could have worked with the developer to make it a win-win for everybody. That's what the urgency is. There's nobody concerned about somebody going to their house and cutting the tree down in the front yard. That was something I pushed back about having that added to the language and that can be removed. Really, the focus is on us missing the opportunity to have a say in how to do better developments. And if we can't have any control over the land being cleared and balanced prior to our input, then it doesn't matter. It's game over, you know? It's just like, we've always, on every site plan, it shows you how to build a road. But now I'm finding out that we just take the developer's word for it. We don't inspect any of the roads to make sure they're put in correctly. And we don't require third-party inspections on them. And, but then when the road fails and somebody buys the condo site or the houses, they're going to be coming to us because their roads have collapsed and their roads have failed. And it's, I don't think that that's a separate issue. But it's been uncovered by this premature activity of altering the land prior to a plan. Now, there is a condo site over there. The land they're working in is unit number four that got a conceptual site plan in 2008 that I voted on. That I'm, you know, that I voted on in 2008, that that land was going to have four building sites someday. And they would bring us the plans to be approved for each of those building sites. The first two is the Tim Hortons. That actually took two of the spots. The one is across the driveway from Tim Hortons to the north. And down in the bottom of the valley, right next to the highway is where they're land clearing and balancing. That's unit number four. Those units have not got a site plan approval yet. Just the concept that the space was created in the condo complex and that there would be a commercial building somewhere on that site someday. So that's, I try to make it as clear as possible that the risk is that we are going to lose control over making better developments. Not not having developments, but having the ability to make them better. Well, I've been trying to do things, it's a long fight for 22 years.
Yeah, Tresho Brown? Just a couple of quick things. You mentioned, you know, I pointed out that I asked the board to form an ad hoc committee to have us look at Woodlands ordinances. There was nothing on that agenda that said we were going to form anything or take any action against residents. You indicated you didn't do it because we were going to stop people from doing it. That's not the case. And I can get you the minutes from the meeting because that's where I read it. Okay? And again, I don't have a problem with what you said back then. I think people have property rights and we should walk very carefully when we start stepping on those rights. To me, and my other thought, which I forgot to say earlier was, you know, I don't think you just can jam through this. And I would like to hear our legal opinion sooner than later. I think that's very pertinent to this whole thing. But why don't we start having our building department and our planner reach out to the developers who own this property and let them know that moving forward, the township is going to give great preference when there's significant trees left up as we negotiate with them on how things are going to be developed. And let me tell you something, the developers are going to like that too. Because they'll feel like they've got something to negotiate with. But if we're going in here now and saying, we're just going to stop them, what you're going to see is people going, we better get them all knocked down before they still tell us we can't. That's what worries me. That's what worries me. Well, I mean, you can get sued. I would prefer not to be sued. But my point is, why don't we talk, we probably know who owns every lot and we should be telling them. We really want to work hard on the next developments to be able to help keep as much trees as we can. And we're going to, we're going to really try to negotiate on that through our planning commission. Wouldn't be this board doing it. And, and to me, that's a better shot than trying to be heavy-handed. And, you know, they want to do the best thing they can.
Yeah.
Well, I understand that, but the board will give them that instruction that this is what we'd like them to see. So anyways, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Paul, you would like to say something? So hold on. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Can we get a legal opinion?
Hold on. Any, you would like to say something?
No, I guess my only comment is, you know, Ms. Coons talked about getting control of the township. And I think the township has controls. It has, it has the master plan and it has ordinances. And I guess I'm like many in the crowd tonight. I'd like to save as many trees as we can and have as good a development as we can. But that goes along with our ordinances. So if we, we think the ordinances need to be changed, then we should, should look at those. But, but we need to watch that whatever do it is, is legal step by step as well. So.
I agree with you, Rob. That's okay. Brittany, can you guys, can you please tell me, give me a legal opinion?
So we wrote a very limited legal opinion, which was issued today. We were asked yesterday afternoon, I believe, to look at this. There are procedural steps that you need to follow when passing a moratorium for it to be legally sound and defensible. We did raise some issues in our letter and we did request more time for legal review. If you have any questions specifically on that opinion, I am happy to answer them.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just release the opinion? I realize it was put in as a confidential legal opinion. I see no reason why it needs to be confidential. I don't see any reason why the board can't just make a motion to read it. It's only a page and a half long.
So the board, once I issue a legal opinion, it's yours. You can vote by a majority vote to release it? If that's your prerogative?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the release of the legal opinion on this issue so the public can understand that perspective and that we read it tonight.
Most support.
Okay. It's going to be simple majority, right? Yeah. Okay. All right.
I would caution that if you're going to be challenged down the road on your procedure, I lay out what the issues are in my letter. So that's my only caution with regard to if you, and it's a board decision whether or not to release it. It's your opinion. But I do have to, I do have to advise you of that from a liability perspective.
Okay. Yes, Trustee Murray.
Obviously, we don't, everything you do is up for challenge. So I'm not in favor of showing our hand. But I know what it is. And I know that, I think you could summarize it into something more vague. And basically, and along the lines of the time needed and that you need to make it favorable for us to do it, to find a way for us to defend it.
So my lead, that's.
Without disclosing all the points.
Excuse me really quick though. I think we're in the middle of a motion. So you have to finish before discussion.
We've got a second. We need a vote.
It's going to be simple majority or revocable?
Simple majority.
Okay. 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 All those in favor? Excuse me?
I just made a motion to make it public and it's just passed. I want it, I want it public. Absolutely.
So what happened there, he made the motion and there was a second and then they started discussion. We had to finish that vote before we have any discussion. And that, I'm sorry, that's what got missed? Okay. I think these microphones are more for the television, not an overhead speaker.
Does somebody have a copy of that?
No.
Do you have a copy of the motion?
Was this, I don't know what the vote was.
I don't have it in front of me. I mean, I know, I wrote it this morning. I didn't hear it pronounced.
Only Sam? So we're six one? Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're okay.
Just trying to catch up.
Do you want me to read it into the record?
No.
Okay. I think you have a copy. I wrote it this morning, so I don't even have it in front of me because I know what I wrote. Okay. Is our understanding that the board is being asked to consider a moratorium on land clearing for a 90-day period, during which time a tree and woodland ordinance would be reviewed and potentially enacted? We've been requested to advise on the appropriate procedure for the passage of a legally defensible moratorium. We have not been asked to opine specifically on whether a moratorium on the clear cutting of trees is lawful as presented and more research would be needed for our office to advise regarding same. Generally, townships utilize moratoria to pause the issuance of a permit approval, i.e. zoning approvals, for a set period to study and potentially adopt new regulations on a particular topic. The most common challenges to moratoriums are generally on the formation of the moratorium. Specifically, it is common for developers to challenge moratoriums on the adoption process. It is our understanding that the township does not currently have an ordinance regulating clear cutting of trees, i.e. Woodlands ordinance. Based on my limited review, the moratorium at issue arguably, this is not definitive. Again, we've stated throughout that we need to do more research. Arguably creates a regulation rather than serving to simply suspend an existing regulation under the zoning ordinance. It is longstanding rule that municipalities can enact zoning ordinances only by strictly complying with the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Therefore, in my opinion, could be argued, but it is again, not definitive, that the township is utilizing the moratorium as a de facto ordinance without following the procedures set forth under the MZEA for lawful enactment of a zoning regulation. However, due to the limited scope of this review, more research is needed for us to issue a determinative opinion on whether the procedure to pass the moratorium would violate the MZEA. In addition to the above concerns, there is also case law that suggests that a moratorium is to be passed by resolution or in some cases by zoning ordinance amendment. We generally, as a matter of practice, advise against adopting a moratorium by motion as our review does not reveal on-point case law that would suggest a court would uphold same. We would further recommend any such resolution and/or zoning amendment set forth an explanation as to how the moratorium is addressing a direct and immediate threat to public health, safety and general welfare and findings of fact that support the public health, safety and welfare threat to ensure the moratorium is legally defensible in the event of a challenge. In sum, our office has only been engaged in a limited review of the proposed moratorium with regard to procedural issues that may be implicated. However, as set forth herein, there are concerns that we recommend be further researched and addressed so that the board may be fully advised. That's my legal opinion. Not that you can't pass a moratorium, not that you should or you shouldn't. That's not our job. Our job is to advise on the legal risks and the procedural requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody else? So that's, so that's. So that's been made public now. Now you understand my concern relative to us rushing into this. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to call anybody out. We've got people who believe this is something very important and yet I don't have any of our professionals here other than this legal opinion. And the legal opinion only came, was only asked for yesterday.
When was this put on the agenda?
Last week. That's not a question for me. I heard nothing about this until the agenda came out myself. So that would be.
I don't know either. I'm asking. I'm asking.
Right. That would be a question for the supervisor. It's his, it's his, it's his agenda item.
Yeah, if he knew the, if this was just on the agenda, the professionals should have been here. In my opinion, in a week.
Okay. Well, just for clarity, the professionals that they're talking about is the planning department and the consultants. They're, they're professionals in that regard. But to put a moratorium on a tree cutting is a legal thing for the board to do. That's above, in my opinion, that's above their level. We're, as a recommending body, the Open Space Committee is, you know, the urgency of trying to get something in place to stop it is, you know, if we take months and months and months to come up with ordinances and tree ordinances, the risk is that developer is going to act in a less favorable way to the township by, you know, doing what's started to happen in the township. Now, whether or not there's an intent to do that, we don't know. But there's a lot of large acre parcels and yeah, there's the risk. Now we want to, we've always, it's not that we, this is where I get so frustrated because we're not trying to control cutting trees. We've always controlled cutting trees. We're just trying to do it better, do a better job. And we can't do that if there's no trees to work with. That's, if that's any simpler way of saying it. We always control the trees. And we've been very generous with tree clearing. And you can take a look around. You can't get more generous with tree clearing. Okay? Then we have been. So we're just saying that now the cat's out of the bag and we're finding out that we have no oversight. We have nobody monitoring it. We have nobody, there's no regards. We're at the mercy of the developer to do the right thing and leave the land natural until a plan has been put in place. So there's the risk. Can you, can we trust the developers to work in good faith like they always? Can you, can we trust the developers to work in good faith like they always have in the past or are they going to now traverse into this new path of clearing and land balancing without a plan in place? That's, that's the bottom line of what we're talking about, so that there's the risk that we're all gonna weigh. Do we roll the dice, how long does it take, can we negotiate this faster, how could we fast track it, how soon, you know, that's what we were hoping would become the dialogue of the meeting is, okay, now it sounds like no one's in favor of passing a moratorium tonight because there's not enough information and against legal saying she needs more time to work on how we can make it defendable, um, do, you know, what is the next, you know, how, do we have a consensus of the board that it's something that they wanna pursue? We should get to that and then if it is, are we, what can we do to go, to move it along quickly, to put these protections in place? That would be my, those are my points to make.
My recommendation would be to table it and give it back to the N Kelly office to look, take a look and bring it back.
Some people still had comments.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm in the board right now, so that will be my recommendation. I think, I don't see that everybody is in favor to cull the trees, but I, everybody's in favor to follow the law and the rules, so it's me. And I believe that we should table this and give it back to the N Kelly office to take a look and bring it back in the next board meeting. That's my recommendation, but I would like to hear from you guys, but.
Is that the next step or the, the comment finishes?
We're still on the board, we're still on the board.
So, two things.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I wanna, I've got a question, quick question for the attorney and that, that is, have you seen anywhere where a moratorium was passed to stop something that wasn't already being controlled by a township in any of your work? Have you found, have you seen any of that anywhere?
To be, to be completely frank with you, no, and that's an issue we're looking into to see if that's a legally defensible position, that this is a complicated, there's a lot of complicated legal issues that we wanna do more research on.
Okay, so my, thank you. So, from that, what I'll say is, I don't wanna make, I don't wanna table it and send it back to have the attorney spend more money to further tell us we shouldn't do it. It's not like it's, to me, it's not like it's a close argument based on just the idea of what these moratoriums are for. This is the wrong tool to do this. And so, what I would do is I would make a motion to request that the supervisor reach out to the communities that are nearest that have tree ordinances and I would like to see if they can provide us with the cost structure of what they put together and how much they've spent on an annual basis to enforce that ordinance and what the result is. I don't wanna run down this road unless I can find out it's not overly burdensome on the taxpayers. If it comes back and they say, yeah, it's twenty-five grand a year and we're doing great, now we can put that in place right away. If it's six figures, it's a different conversation and I'd be, believe all the taxpayers have a right to really hear about that in the proper setting within the board looking at a new ordinance. I would also point out, if I misunderstood, there was an indication that one of our professionals, Carlisle Wortman, wasn't the guy who should be brought here to this meeting to discuss these things and yet included in the packet is a proposal he was requested to make to prepare the tree ordinance. So, how is he not the expert? If we've asked him to prepare this and he's given us a budget of ten thousand dollars to put it together? So, I'm not sure why he's not here and why we're saying he's not the expert if we've just paid him, we wanna have him pay us to do it. It, it, we need to be better at this because we're, I think we're wasting time, so that's my motion, to get information from the local communities nearby who, who, we can get information about budgeting on what this costs. As a starting point.
Trust me, Mark.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
It's second.
We don't have to be, we can continue, I just wanna make this motion so we don't forget. I think it's important.
I just want, the reason-
There's a second, there's a, there's a, there's a motion on the table and it's been seconded.
Yeah, okay. All right.
There's a vote, you have to vote. There's a, my motion's been seconded, we can't do anything else until we vote on it.
How can you not finish the discussion?
We're not done with discussion, I've made a motion separate from what we're doing. I don't wanna forget about it. I think we should go out and get information on what it costs for a tree ordinance before we start spending all kinds of money on consultants to tell us what it's gonna cost.
After he make a motion, we need to go for a vote or we can still talk him?
It's a second.
You're the chair, you can set the procedure, but I believe that as a matter of policy throughout the meeting, you've been having a motion on the table, having a second and then taking a vote. You should follow the procedure that you've been following throughout the meeting.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Yes or no?
No.
You're a no?
Yeah.
So, I just would like to say that there, there's a cost in preserving your community and I think that the residents are willing to pay to preserve their community. And I think that we could find evidence that communities that are preserved, their property values go up and they're more desirable to live in. You know, we're the last community on the Detroit Shore system, we're the last one in Oakland County that's by the expressway. Um, we're a special place, we don't need to make concessions or bow down to anybody, but the value is what we have now. What I'm seeing is we're becoming a hotel gas station rest area, stop off on I seventy-five, that's what it's gonna look like when you get off at Sashawal Road. It's just every other hotel stop from here across the country that you get off at the state of hotel and buy gas, you know, that's, that's because it's so in your face, it doesn't have to be so in your face, but I, I'm not, um, I, I think that, uh, there's a, West Bloomfield has a tree ordinance, a lot of people have tree ordinances, they made the commitment to preserve their community and there was a cost that came with it. We're, we're, we're a wealthy enough community that we can, we can afford to protect ourselves if need be. I think that, um, I did not get the impression from Brittany that we can't find a way to, um, do this, uh, it's not impossible, they're just, she hasn't had enough time to do it, that's what I got out of her legal opinion, that, now, maybe, uh, and I don't think I would be, I don't think that going after the residential properties should be part of it, that's not what the initial intent was, it was kinda like ask for as much as you can and then get beat down to what you can get, get out of the deal, just like any negotiation, just like developers do to us, they beat us down for as much density as they can get and then they sell it off to the highest bidder. That's how it works now. It didn't used to work that way, it used to work when the builder had pride in his development like in the subdivisions in the township back in the nineties and two thousands and the devout builders built their own subdivisions and they put in their own kinda houses and, and now it's different, now you do a land assembly, you beat the township up for as much density as you can and you pawn it off on the highest bidder. So, it's a business thing, which I get, which is fine, but we can, we have the ability to control it, I, I think that it's the money thing, I'm, if you wanna get a cost on it, I think that that's something we're gonna need no matter what, what is, does it cost to preserve, uh, the character of our community? Um, it's no secret, that's a big deal for me, you know, uh, but, you know, the, uh, the bigger government argument, I don't think that holds water, that's only if you go after the private landowner's word. I understand, I'm just saying that.
Okay.
And moving forward, you know, and that, um, uh, we need the, we need to find a way. Now, if it takes longer, I think that we should fast track it, I think the board should make a commitment to whatever they're gonna do to do it exponentially because we are at risk and now you've been put on notice for it.
Yes.
Can I reference something that you had mentioned, Sam?
Okay.
You said that we don't know where the dirt is coming from? Why not? I mean, that could be coming from East Palestine, Ohio, right?
I hope not.
Well, I would hope not too.
As fast as the trucks are coming in.
All right.
Excuse me really quick, I'm just trying to be fair, Mr. Roth was waiting in line when we went back to public.
I know, somebody asked for a comment, I get a comment. Bob, you'd like to speak?
Hello, it's Bob Roth, twenty-five Madison Court, Clarkston, Michigan. Uh, I'm a developer and, uh, we've developed this building that you're standing in, uh, the daycare center next door, the shopping center over here on the corner, this property over here next to us, we've cut the trees down before, uh, you know, you're, you're asking for things and, you know, Sam, you make it sound like this township, uh, is not very well. I think this township is very well. I think there's a lot of development here that looks very nice. I think, uh, I don't drive around and look at shopping centers and see a big tree that was left there, you know, you're, you're a smart man, there's not, you can't go in there and clear a park and build a shopping center and build a parking lot, you gotta level it off, you can't save a tree in the middle of a parking lot, you know? I think if you're asking for a ninety day moratorium here, I'd like a ninety day moratorium on taxes. Why should I have to pay taxes on our property while you decide what I should be able to do with my property? It sounds like you're also signaling out, uh, commercial development over residential. I think that's not fair, uh, that's another story, I'll have my daughter explain what the fair is, but, uh, I, I think that, uh, you know, you're doing a good job. I think this over here across the street, you know, I mean, it's not the place I would like to live, but, you know, it looks like a lot of places everywhere, but tell me what you would do different over there. You're talking about the density? Are you telling me there's any trees you could've saved over there in front of any of those houses? Why didn't you save those trees in front of those houses? You had a chance at that? I mean, if a guy owns a property that you've been paying taxes on here for many years and they wanna go in and cut the trees down on the property that they own, I think it's their right. You know, I don't see anything wrong with this development here. You know, is there any problem with the shopping center down where Kroger built on any other corners? You know, I don't see where any trees were saved, you try to save as many trees, cutting trees down is expensive, but I don't think it changes the development, so that's what I'm asking for, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Sure.
Okay, Vincent Buzone, seventy-nine twenty-five Foster Road. I was, I was, excuse me, pick up on something Sam said before, which was that something changed and in the past, uh, a developer wasn't able to do anything to the land until he had a site plan that was approved, I assume, by the planning committee. Okay? So, my question is, this, I mean, all of this stuff that you guys are talking about has got me totally confused and it seems to me it would be a lot easier to just have a policy that says you don't get to do anything till you get a site plan approved. And that's it, it's a policy from the planning committee, it's not all these, all this other stuff they're talking about, moratoriums and this and that. Seems to me that would be a lot simpler way to do it and that would force these developers to do exactly what Paul is saying, which is to negotiate how, how this thing's gonna look and how you're gonna try to preserve the, as much nature as you can, as you can, why not just do it that way? It just seemed to me to be a simpler way instead of all of the other stuff that you guys are talking about, it's got me totally confused, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
David Hayward, six-seven-six-four Berwick Drive. We tell people, um, when they wanna build something, how tall it can be, how big it can be, how many people can be in it, what it has to look like, how big the sign is, how tall it is, why can't we tell them what the trees have to be? Well, how is that any different? I, I don't understand that, so maybe that's something that needs to start being added when we do these plans. They say, that's great, you wanna build a shopping center, but we need trees in the front, or whatever it may be. Um, and then second thing that was brought up earlier in discussion, that somebody made the comment regarding, where, where were you, were these people thirty years ago, um, when buildings were being built? I was here thirty years ago, anybody else besides Paul? I was here forty years ago, anybody else besides Paul? I was here fifty years ago.
No, forgotten.
Fifty-five, I, I was born here in nineteen sixty-seven. I was here talking about this, um, apartment, the subsidized housing development that went in to stop it, to watch the people come in, drive out there every day with their headlights shining in my mom's window, which ended up happening, how they did not follow any of the site plans, how they buried things that filled in ponds that weren't supposed to be buried, I knew those ponds were over there because that's where I played when I was a kid. So, I have stood up for certain things, I mean, I understand that this, that the township has to grow, but that doesn't mean we just rubber stamp everything that comes through and people don't complain. I complain if it's something that I don't think's good for the community. So, I've been here thirty years, forty years, I've been here a long time and I've come up here and voiced my opinion. And when you guys start, things start getting silly, then I have to come back up here after I've worked all day long, spent all day standing outside and then I know I have to come up here and talk about things that need to change so what happened across the street doesn't happen again. I know we can't stop it, but why aren't we changing things? I look at other communities, just like you said, we have opportunities to stop things from continuing the way they're continuing. If you wanna build in this township, guess what, there's more people than there are builders and if it's our township, we live here, we pay taxes too and there's a lot more of us than there are builders and developers and if we want our township to look this way, that's the way it's gonna look. You don't have to build here, it's real easy, sell your property and let somebody else put up with it. But if that's the way we want it, that's what we elect you for, that's why I'm on a committee, you know, granted, it's not the, the zoning committee or the, the planning commission, rather, but I'm doing my part to be part of this township. I'm on my HOA, I do what I can do, I volunteer, I show up to the meetings, but I'm just telling you, you know what, this is my township, I pay taxes here, I've lived here a long time and to see what's happened to it, it's sad, something has to change going forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Lynch, ninety-two sixty Sashawal Road, I've been in this county for, in this township for forty-three years. I love living in Clarkston, I raised my children here. I've worked in this county, I just retired from Clarkston schools. I love Clarkston. I don't like everything that's happening lately. You can go down Main Street, the houses there, they have to be painted a certain way, you can't put aluminum siding on those buildings, you have ordinance to protect the houses. Some of those trees were over a hundred years old, older than some of the houses. But she'll protect that and not the trees. We can do better, I think you can do better and I think you should do better and I would appreciate if you did better. I know there's hoops to jump through, maybe there's historical status for trees, I don't know, but we have to have something done because I've gone down Walden's, going to work at Clarkston Elementary every day and just cried when I saw all those trees coming down. I drive down seventy-five and I go on that one overpass, all those people that live in that area are gonna get headlights every single day, night, two. That wouldn't happen if some of the trees were saved and I don't think they all had to be cut down. So, here's hoping that, yeah, we do do better. I like the idea that you want to do better. I hope you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Joe.
I'm Joe Suter, five-zero-seven-one Hilltop Estates, Clarkston. Um, I'm also on the open space committee. Um, and as most of you, I imagine, know, the resolution that was passed by the committee was written by Jerry Fisher, you know, a renowned attorney in land matters, so I'm not saying that he's right, you're wrong, or anything else, but it wasn't done by an amateur. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow night here. Um, if it is, if you want, our committee, which as of the moment, does not have anything on the agenda to do with this issue, we, we were finished when we gave our, uh, resolution to you. If you ask to take another look at that and perhaps have Jerry maybe talk with you and come up with something that is legally defensible and that we can move forward on, we're not trying to come up with ordinances, we are not writing ordinances on our, on our committee, but we're making recommendations and that's what this was. It was simply a recommendation to stop, look, you know, gather some more information, you people doing it, not us, but if you want us to go forward and recraft the resolution, make sure it passes the legal test and maybe narrows it down a little bit more, we can get that back on our agenda. There is nothing on our agenda right now on this issue, period, nothing. You want it on there, I'll put it on there. You want it on there, I'll put it on there. And you don't have to take a formal motion to do that. Just call me in the morning and say, hey, can you get it on there? And I'll get it on for tonight. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Sue Julian, representing Blue Heron Headwaters Conservancy, 7150 Dixie Highway. Um, the reason I spoke in favor of a moratorium is because it is the health, safety and welfare of the community that you need to be alert to and work from that basis. And I do feel that you have a legal responsibility when you find that your community is changing and, uh, even rainfall and climate is changing in a way that you feel is negative for the community. So, uh, getting more opinions on this, I suppose, is, um, helpful, but to have a moratorium so that the damage that you see doesn't continue immediately now, uh, I think is important. I just want to reiterate, I do think the moratorium was a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark Newsom, 9410 Ortonville Road, Clarkson. Um, the big business thing, that was taken out when he mentioned if the property needed to have, what, what, what is it? Not an inspection, but what do you call it when the property needs to be looked at by the township?
Final site plan?
Well, that, even before that, if it's going to need any kind of looking at. It takes the residential part of it out. I mean, nobody's here to pick on a residential person. It's just, uh, basically what I think the open committee is doing is making the township aware that you got to do something. Because it's not just trees. It's drainage, it's everything. What happened, what would have happened if the hotel that's trying to develop behind Arby's and all that? What happened if you would have filled all that in before you even came to you? You couldn't have stopped him. It's his property. He wouldn't have a wetlands issue now, would he? It's not trees, it's the opposite. It's drainage. You can't stop somebody from doing something. It's commercial. If it's zoned, non-residential, you, you can do something about it, plain and simple. You have the strength to do that.
Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to, I mean, just want to let you know, there are all kinds of laws in place about filling in wetlands. If somebody sees somebody doing it, call the township because we'll get the state out there. They can't fill in wetlands. That's already, that's already protected if there is a designated wetland. I, I wish we had our, our, I wish, I wish we had, uh, someone here from our planning and zoning department, again, who could simply have answered that question because I'm pretty confident I'm right.
What behind Tim Hortons? Is that wetlands?
Who knows?
I, I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe it's a protected wetland. I'm sorry, folks, please, we have, we have, everyone can talk, but I, I, this is where we don't want to start going back and forth. Um, that's a great question. There's been a, a, an allegation that they filled in a wetland.
I didn't say they filled in a wetland.
It was questionable.
I said, we don't know what's there and there's no soil erosion in place.
What I, what I will tell you is that, that that person went to the building department weeks before they did it and told them what they were going to do. And I, I just, I will be, I'm sure the supervisor could personally go talk to Brian Ottman tomorrow and find out if there's wetlands that were filled in. And if there are, there's going to be hell to pay. But I don't like us saying that it's not enforced because we enforce that all the time and we do it on residuals too.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. If you would like to come tomorrow, I'll give you my, before you leave, my card too. I know I'm going to give you my card and my number and we will follow up with that.
I got some of your cards and you can email me.
All right, all right. I don't know about that. I, I know that you see, see Brian Ottman and he replied to you though.
If you want to email me, I'd be happy to find out for you.
Is, there's not enough complaints.
Okay, all right, sure. Please, if you can come tomorrow morning, come to my office tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I would, I'll follow up with them, okay? Well, you can come at seven if you want. It's up to you. All right. Okay, um, anybody else? Oh, oh, sure, sure.
Carla Allen, 7761 Park Crest Circle. I will not make the mistake of not being here again, Teresa. I know you brought that up as far as where we, where were we? I did trust that, that monstrosity would have been taken care of differently. So you will, I might be your worst nightmare. I won't be here every month. Um, with that said, I just have a question. So we, we're talking a lot about, you know, preserving trees, which is important. I certainly think in that development on the highway, I, I can't imagine why we didn't keep another 10 or 20 feet buffer. I can't imagine what homes are going to be there that wouldn't have wanted that. So my question is, where in the process, besides saving trees, is it in the site plan that a developer tells you what trees that they will replace? Is that, is that part of that, um, development and is that part of the process in the site plan where a subdivision is told, yes, you're going to take all these down, but these trees must, this certain amount of trees must be planted in these areas? Is that part of the site plan process still?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a certain requirement for open space that we require that's in the ordinance for properties.
Okay.
That is one of the points that I was making is if you have to have a certain percentage of open space.
Right.
Uh, or green space and it's been eliminated and it's all about revegetation.
Okay.
Which you can't revegetate against the off-ramp when they cut down all those trees.
Right, right.
You know, that's going to be significant. Um, uh, there is a plan to plant some pine trees over there. So maybe by the time I'm 100, those will, um, uh, shelter those new condominiums from there. But, um, uh, again, everyone throws out the master plan protects us. The master plan doesn't have anything to do with tree preservation once you get down to the site plan of a lot.
Yeah.
That's, uh, the master plan specified that we were going to have commercial development over by Tim Hortons. And that's where we allocated future commercial development to go. And that's what I voted for in 2008, that it's someday, that's would be appropriate for that to be commercial over there.
Right.
Then each site is handled individually, um, to tweak it, you know? Um, and then depending on, uh, who's negotiating for us, you know, with the developers, what you end up getting as far as the final outcome.
Yeah, and that's the important part. I think it's been said a couple of times that, you know, we do have control over the developer and if they don't want to follow some of the rules. But we have to have the request in order to try to enforce it. So if we don't have people who think it's important, um, we're talking a lot about what the cost is going to be. What's going to be the cost when your taxpayers start leaving? Because I will do a full-on campaign not to move to Clarkson if that's the case. Because I pay, you know, I have a 600,000 plus home. I pay a lot to the school districts. I don't even have children. So there is a cost for me to be here that far exceeds, you know, my need to be here. There's a lot of other places to be. So I love that, but I also think with the master of site plans and that, we can tell, tell the developer, it can't be a one-inch caliber tree. It can be a seven-inch caliber tree. There's ways to do that and you can bargain with a developer, but once you sell your soul, it's too late. So it should be done, done upfront and developers should know that Clarkson is a place where the township is not going to bow down. Because you will, the cost, you will lose taxpayers. And I think that's something you have to think about, the analysis of profit and loss. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, before moving on, I just want to make a final comment, you know? I talked to most of you during the last summer. I went to your door, I talked to most of you and we talked about, most of the people were very concerned about the density. Most of the people I talked to were concerned about the trees. And when the open space committee came to me with this recommendation and said, you know, I want to chair with the board, my intentions, my heart was in the right place. Because I don't represent my opinion, I represent the people's opinion. And since I talked to, I would say with everybody, because I didn't start talking with people since last summer. I actually have been talking to people since 2012 and people brought their concern to me. I talk to people almost every day. I go to different events and I thought, you know, I want to chair to the board. You know, I mean, you see what happened tonight? I will keep trying to make sure I protect the township and work it out with people, working with, still with the developers and all that. But, um, I just want to let the people know that I still going to represent you well and keep trying. All right, uh, moving on, um, we don't have closing session to, uh, we don't have, excuse me.
We have an item.
What title? Which one?
This one.
Oh, okay.
Your item.
All right. All right. Thank you, Paul. You're very kind. Okay.
Yeah, well, um, I want to make a motion that we approve the 90-day moratorium on land clearing for properties that, um, but that those, um, uh, are only on properties that we require a site plan review and those properties which have already received a building permit or final site plan approval are exempt.
Okay, I second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Regrett- regrettably, just got to do it differently.
All right. Okay, now we're moving on. Thank you, Paul, for reminding me that. Okay, we're going to have a closed session tonight and then we have a communication, future agenda items. We have reports, which is called 2023 actual budget comments for a period ending on August 31st, 2023. And then two, building department monthly reports, September 2023. Three, we have the residential open space advisory committee, August 9th, 2023. Four, video center administrator board, April 19th, 2023. Board members comment. Again, this is not a forum, a debate, I mean, board members comment. Okay? No comments? All right, Paul?
Okay. Uh, I do appreciate all the folks that came out. Um, I know that, that, you know, for a long time, you've not been in, maybe felt like you were in the majority. I do think that, that most people want protections of, of trees and the environment. They want that, like, they just don't want it, they don't want to be told to do it. They want to be able to buy into that on their own. But I think you do have to have a voice here. And like I said, I brought the idea of a wood ordinance as far back as 15 and, and you did talk about costs and I just, I just think we did, we got to know that before we start, at least. So I appreciate everyone coming in and, and, uh, we'll just keep looking, I think.
Okay, thank you. All right. A yard, um, motion for a yard?
Good yard.
Okay, second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Paul.